All right, so welcome to the February 5, 2019 Planning Board Meeting, starting just about on time. The first item on the agenda is the Master Plan Steering Committee update. I know we just had a meeting. Amy, do you want to give us an update from that meeting?
Sure. We went through the rest of the action items. The first meeting, we went through land use. So at the next meeting, we went through the others, which were housing, open space, all the rest of them. And we got through most of them. And the next meeting for the public, the public outreach is on the 13th, which is next week at Z-School. And I think the consultants are going to update the website, right?
Yes, they're going to provide the draft recommendations.
Okay.
They weren't up as of this morning.
Right.
I didn't check tonight, but they'll be up.
Oh yeah, sorry.
Because there are a lot of recommendations, so it'd be good for the public who's coming to read them in advance, because there's going to be four, well, all, there's going to be breakout tables for each subject, but everybody will have a chance to go to the four different tables. So you want to pick what's most interesting to you, or what you have ideas for. So if it's land use or open space, you can pick it. So there are four different tables, and then we'll rotate after 20 minutes. So I guess that would be my only recommendation, is to check the website and read the recommendations before you attend the meeting next week.
Any thoughts on the, on what you guys have done so far, and what's expected for the 14th that the Planning Board needs to be considering before we?
We didn't talk about it before, at this meeting, because we had done a lot of stuff time before. But one thing that did, we still don't have all the information about the smart growth, and missing middle, and all that. So the consultants are going to give us a little sheet before we start next week. So if people ask questions, we'll know. But, so hopefully, we'll get those this week, too. So nothing's really changed on that end. But I might recommend that instead of naming smart growth, missing middle, it could be more of a vague action item, like, you know, look into housing methods to bring viability to the downtown versus actually naming smart growth, because it's very specific. I didn't think a lot of the other action items were specific as that.
Well, it seems like viability to, maybe I'm not understanding what you're meaning by smart growth and missing middle, because it seems like viability downtown is something different than what those might be.
Right, well, that's the thing, too, is what do people want to see downtown? I think there's going to be like a master plan for the downtown and revitalization. Because do people want it to look nice, with the street skate, besides, which we all want to do? Or do you actually want to bring more people living downtown?
Okay.
That was, and I don't even think we have an answer yet, like, what is the town thinking? What do the residents feel? Are they trying to get stores down there, and people living down there? Or do they just want it to look nice?
So you'd hope for nice weather, so people can go on the 13th and participate in that discussion.
Right.
Okay.
Because I think the snow day is the 14th, which is Valentine's Day, so we won't get many people.
Right, right. No, you're right, you won't get any.
But I don't think it's going to snow, so I think we're good.
Okay. Anything to add?
No, on the open space, I think everybody sort of agreed with the open space. We tweaked it a little bit on a couple of things with recreation. I think there was a clear consensus from most of the committee members to really try to observe the 100-year wetlands. And, you know, we talked a little bit about that, and the observance of, you know, climate change, the 100-year wetlands, 100-year storm, I mean, and maybe the 500-year storm. So we talked a little bit about that, right, back and forth, and how you, you know, talk about climate change and incorporate that into the master plan. And so that was a discussion we had. I think the interesting discussion we had was on affordable housing, but not so much affordable housing, whether you've met your benchmark for 40B, but affordable housing on, you know, that group that's, you know, are we pricing out of the town? And, you know, I think Rick Leaf, who's co-chair of it, made a really valid point about maybe having a committee to sort of figure out where that price point is, what's that price that makes it affordable for people who are maybe going to sell their house, who's a senior downsizing for, you know, 400, 500, you know, are they going to have to then come up with 500 to 600 for, you know, one of the new over 55s? Although we have nothing on the market right now that's new construction, but those do go for that. Or is it, you know, something that's a 250, 300 mark? We talked a little bit about, they don't necessarily qualify for low income, but yet, you know, they're downsizing, or they're being, you know, they're going to be squeezed out of the town. And then certainly, myself as a Realtor, I know, you know, what the prices are. They're just not coming down. They're appreciating. So we talked about, how do we help those people who are actually in that situation, which I think Rick was talking more about, you know, the seniors who have lived here for a long time that need to downsize, taking the equity from their house, will they be able to stay here? So that was an interesting dialogue we had. We also had a dialogue about if you have any large projects coming through, you know, can you sort of go to, what do we talk for the, for the developer? Where you could request the developer to maybe give you some affordable housing.
Inclusionary zoning.
Inclusionary. So I think it's important for the Planning Board to talk about maybe inclusionary, and that'll probably come out of the master plan next year. I mean, I know a lot of surrounding communities have it. I think the one thing that we did talk about was that it was important that, that maybe we, as a board, when we do talk about inclusionary, that we try to do the actual housing and not maybe get a lump sum payment instead, because then you're never really addressing the problem. And so we talked a lot about that, with the housing. Was there anything else with housing, Kathy? I think that was pretty much it.
Yep.
And then land use, we had already, and then the other thing was economic development. And I think the other thing was on the key, that everyone sort of on the committee thought that it would be viable to have an economic development person on staff here who could help. And then some other, you know, issues with economic development were discussed.
So that's, that's not a position that we presently have on staff, it's a position we'll have to create.
Right. And that might be one of those, you know, there's, some of them are long-term goals. It might take 10 to 15 years to do. This might be one of the, I don't know, I'm not a budget person for the town, but it might be something where the board would say, that would be really good if you could try to achieve that in the next couple of years. Might help the town move forward to the next level. So I think that, I think for us as a board, I know Amy talked about the smart growth, right? I think inclusionary housing is, I think, a key that I'd like to see on. And then also, we talked about whether we want to talk about solar again. You know, we tried once before, maybe we need to go back to it, since we did get certification of a green community.
So you mean the bylaw that we tried?
Yeah, in a field.
Regarding the large solar projects?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe looking ahead to the 2020 town meeting, some of those would be things to sort of think about addressing for that meeting, or start the development of those for the 2021?
Yeah, could take that while.
Some of those will probably take a little while.
Especially the inclusionary one might take a while. You want to make sure all your stakeholders involved, and stuff like that. That might take a while. And, you know, it might be the same with the solar.
Yep, yep. I know solar was tough, and we did a lot in a short period of time, so.
But we have nothing in our bylaw about solar, right?
As far as for large scale, correct? I mean, people can, people can individually do it on their homes.
Right.
That's, that's something that, that, you know, there isn't any, you don't need zoning for that. I mean, I don't know how many have been approved since Bob's been here, but I mean, there's, you know, if you just drive around town, I mean, you can see them on people's, you know, I mean, whether they've got the panels on their roof, or some people have them in their yard. But that doesn't need a bylaw. But in, in order to do like a commercial, large-scale, you know, there would need to be a bylaw.
What about if the schools or anything around smaller parcels of land in town? Is that anywhere in the bylaw that they cannot be allowed to do it? No?
No, with, no, we don't have, we don't have anything other than, I mean, it's just a, through mass general law, you can do it, you know, residentially.
Okay.
Where you don't need a bylaw for that. And then some communities, you know, have small-scale and large-scale solar bylaws. And, and it's constantly evolving. So, you know, we would, if it's something that, you know, we're going to pursue as a community, you know, we'd be working with the state a lot, because they've got some model language that's always evolving. Because, you know, when, when solar bylaws first, you know, sort of came into the, you know, you know, the thing to do in Massachusetts, it was all about tearing down trees to put in, you know, solar panels. And, and now, you know, not so much. I mean, what, you know, we don't want to take down trees in order to put in, you know, take down one form of, you know, one resource to put up another resource. So, you know, what you would probably want to do through the bylaw is, you know, advocate, you know, rooftop installation, parking lot installations, you know, National Grid, we always use that as an example.
Yeah.
So, you know, the bylaw would be a different bylaw than what we had originally proposed. Because I'm assuming that's what, you know, the town board would want to do, as opposed to saying, oh, you know, you've got 10 acres, you can take down the trees. You know, 10 acres of trees to put up a solar field or farm.
Okay.
This is a good discussion.
Yep.
Yep, all right.
I don't know why that AC, does anyone want that AC on?
I, I do not, but I think we're all used to incime of weather being here now, so, on the, on the inside, so. Sorry, did you attend the last master plan meeting?
I did, but I think they covered it.
Okay, nothing else to add? Anthony, did you attend it?
I did not.
Okay, all right. Kathy, anything else about that meeting that we should know about?
No.
Okay, then, excellent. If there's nothing else, then we will, let's move on to, do we have minutes?
No, Elaine hasn't finished the minutes. And, you know, apologize in advance for that. But she's probably about almost three-quarters of the week done now. She has about another half hour of the tape to, to listen to and go back through to finalize her draft.
Okay. No INRs, no lot releases, no bonds, and no other updates right now? Then where are we at on zoning minutes? You want to take us through?
Sure. So, you know, based on your last meeting, you all have the draft in front of you, which is one I had also emailed last week.
Oh yeah.
That, again, you haven't taken any votes, and that's what you need to do tonight, is to take votes on what's going to be put on the warrant, because I have to turn those in tomorrow, as far as the language. And then I also have to schedule the public hearing, and I have to know, you know, we have to publish what the language is. So, so that needs to be wrapped up tonight. So the first one, if you just want me to go article by article?
Sure.
So the first one, and I just gave you page numbers, if you wanted to look in your zoning bylaw to see what the, you know, see the whole context of it. But that is the particular zoning article that you talked about for special permits, and that is changing the shell to May.
So are these special permits granted by this board?
In this particular section, is that how it reads?
Yes, SPGA, so it would also apply to ZBA?
Yes, yep.
And they were okay with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, this was reviewed at their last meeting in January.
Okay.
So, let's see, okay, so that's, so that's, you know, that particular article.
Do you want us to vote on these individually as we go through them?
Yeah, that would be best. I mean, I don't know if you want to have a whole discussion, and then go back, however you want to do it.
Let's do them one at a time. So we'll just, we'll do one, finish it, and move on. So Amy, anything you want to add at this point about?
No.
This first one?
No, I'll pause it.
Carrie?
Good.
Anthony?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve Article 13.
No, no, that's just a page number. They don't have article numbers yet, Michelle.
Just Article appearing at page 13.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the article appearing on page 13.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next one.
Okay, the next one is, relates to the Design Review Committee, and that is part of the Site Plan Bylaw. And this particular, this specific section is found on page 20. And the, this was the language that we had discussed at the last meeting. ZBA went through all of these. There was only two that were specific to the ZBA. But they, they, you know, agreed with this, the language on this one, too. So, again, everything that's underlined is what's being proposed, and then what's crossed out is being, you know, that has a strike through. That's what's being proposed to be deleted from the bylaw.
Amy, any, any discussion? No. Michelle?
I do. So when I, when we first discussed this, I mean, I'd looked to the board on how they want this managed from the Design Review, and since I chair it, I just look to make sure that the board understands what we're doing here. I understand that we're changing the members of the board, and as far as, you know, the appointees will be concerned, it'll be for, do we put in three years? Do we put in how long the appointment would be for?
Yeah, it's, it's here for three years.
For three years, okay. But how do we go about moving forward from now? I mean, does it mean at the end of three years, we ask them, do we put the, you know, the appointment up for review again? I mean, do we just assume who's on it stays rotated on? I mean, I think there was a discussion about it. So as a, as a chair, if I were to come back like a year from now, would people be asking me, do you have two licensed architects? You know, have you, have they gone and said they wanted to stay on it? I mean, I just want to know how you guys want me to implement this.
Well, once, it's, it's really not up to this board. It's up to Town Council, and so the policy of the town as to how members are appointed, reappointed. I mean, there's a standard practice for the town. So Town, once Town Council, they review all of these articles.
Yeah.
You know, before we go to town meeting. And, and then they'll give us direction as to how to, to implement this, knowing that there aren't any term limits now. And then, you know, if this is approved, then, you know, then you go to term limits. So they'll give us, you know, the information as far as how, you know, how you take all the standing members and, you know, assign terms to them, because you want them to be staggered terms.
Right.
Like they are on every board.
Does that have to be in the bylaw when they become sta, or does that part of the policy doesn't have to be in the bylaw? Like, there, you know, the architects will be, you know, on term one, or is any part of that policy that you're talking about?
No, not, no, not that I'm aware of. Whenever we've done, like, we changed something on, on the Open Space Committee. This was several years ago. But we, we added members, and then they had terms. And then Town Council advised us how they get folded in.
And we don't have to go to town meetings?
Right, it wasn't part of the, it wasn't, you know, in the.
So Town Council's going to, with you guys, figure that out, and then you're going to come back and say, this person is, term limit's up, term is up on this date, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, Town Council will just say, you know, you've got the five members, the, typically, the, because it's chaired by the Planning Board person, whether or not Town Council will say that that person has to have a term limit, too, that, you know, will.
We vote on them each year for the planning, right? The Planning Board's members voted each year.
Right, but where you're putting a term limit of three, you know, does, does that, you know, they'll read from the language of the bylaw, does that infer that, you know, the chairman is also a three-year term? Or is it just the, you know, the other four members? So, like I said.
Then we should change that, so it's reviewed every year by the board.
Well, the way I read this is that it's the four members, additionally consists of four members with a preference given to the following disciplines for three-year terms.
Right, okay, yeah.
So, but there is a comma there, which might make all the difference.
So again, that's where, when they do their review of the bylaw, and, I mean, the review of the, of all the articles, not just the zoning articles, of all the articles, you know, they go through all of this and, and point those out to us. Either you've got to add language to it, or you don't, or, or this is how, you know, it gets enacted once it's voted.
If the Planning Board wants to do it more frequently than every three years, I assume that it could. I mean, if, if, if I was appointed, and then two years from now, I'm no longer on the board, I'm not serving my three-year term. So the Planning Board would have to put somebody else in there by default.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'll, I'll be gone.
Yeah.
And so, to the extent that the Planning Board member participates in that staggering, it could be all screwed up.
Yeah.
You know, so I think it has to be considered separately.
And maybe, right, and so maybe that Planning Board, like you said, with the, with the four members with a preference given for three-year terms, you know, they may read that, or they may, you know, say, we have got to put seven more in there or something. I don't, I don't know.
Right.
That's what their job is.
Right, yeah. I think that comma, if that comma comes out, then the four members get the three-year terms.
And then the, I, I was speaking to the town administrator today, saying, asking him that, that there had been some discussion on this board, that you wanted to do the appointments differently than how we do it for all the other boards. And, and he said it would, it would be the way all the other boards are done. It's just the policy of the town, is that if, you know, first you go to the person that's up for reappointment, and you ask them if they want to be reappointed. And then, then if they say no, then you open it up and say, okay, now there's a vacancy on the, on the committee. As opposed to some of you were talking about.
Even on a three-year term schedule?
Yeah, the, the, so the person that, I mean, everything, every, pretty much everyone that has a term limit right now is on three years, at least all the boards that I work with that, that have appointments. So at the end of the third year, the town administrator's office sends out a letter asking that person if they want to be reappointed. And then the, and they also ask the chairman of the board, should that person be reappointed. And then.
If the chairman says no.
The, the, well, we've had that situation, and the person wasn't reappointed.
Okay.
And then, so then if, then if the person says they don't want to be reappointed, then the town advertises that there's a vacancy on the board. And then, you know, and then the interviews are done. And in this particular case, the Planning Board, you know, doesn't do the interviews. And in the past, what we've done, we've vetted it out, I say we, you know, the, the Design Review Committee and the staff person, myself, you know, have vetted out the person, and then, like, presented the person to this board. And then you've, well, you've, you've agreed, but, you know, that would be your prerogative.
Right.
Not to agree, but you could also do it, you know, which it sounds like, which is how you kind of want to go in the future, is that you would interview the person.
All right. Anything else?
No, so the only way that someone who would get off a board is if the chairman didn't agree they should be on a board, if they wanted to stay on a board, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's how it's always worked. Or the person says, I don't want to be on the board, or they get rid in the middle of their term, you know,
Yeah.
I'm moving, or I'm no longer interested, or it's just not working for me, or.
Yeah, okay.
Carrie, anything on this?
So, just to clarify what you're saying about the comma, so if we remove that comma?
I think if this comma comes out, and you put it after the word "board," chaired by a member of the Planning Board, if you put a comma in there, you're separating off the Planning Board member from everyone else. So you remove the comma after disciplines, and put one in after the word "board." Now you've got a two-part sentence. That gets, the two parts get treated differently. That's how I do this.
So I like that idea. I don't know if that's possible, or how much it changes things.
Yeah, no, this is the time to make those types of changes, so. And hopefully, that's what happens. That's what I think will happen. Hopefully, that's what happens, if this is what the board wants.
And then, last time, we talked about the licensed architects, but the meeting was canceled. We were going to ask the architects on the board if there was another level of architects that maybe we can include there, in case that narrowed our pool down to, you know, the eight or 10 actual licensed architects. But did we decide that if we put that note in, that I think Fred came up with, with the, with a preference given on the following disciplines, that that would kind of give us an out, if something?
That, what the, yeah, that's, that's how I had it in my notes, Carrie, was that, that's the language that you had changed it to, that if you, you know, it, you know, if you couldn't find it, this exact mix, then you've got, you know, with a preference given to, and then you've got that, you know, one resident of the town with a related background, so.
Got it. Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, anything else?
No, thank you.
Anthony, what do you think?
I think it's okay.
Okay. I assume that the "or" is, oh, two things, actually. I assume the "or" is at the end of "D", because it's what's up above, or the balance of representation. Okay, that makes sense to me.
And that's how it's in the bylaw today, too. The bylaw reads the, after it says, "One interested and responsible citizen of the town's," semicolon, "or"
Or.
"a balance of representation as close as possible to this mix."
Okay.
And that's, so that sentence is staying the same.
So the, the only reason that this became a little bit confusing to me is because when you deleted the Chamber of Commerce line altogether, the "C" didn't delete? And so it looks like we actually got five itemized things here, although you really only have four, because "C" drops out altogether. So is there a way to do that, so that that "C" disappears and "D" pulls down one?
They'll fix that in the town administrator. I mean,
Okay.
that's just how I do my strike through.
Yeah, well, that's how it usually shows up. And if you try to delete the "C," it screws everything else up.
Right, right, or changes, or, yeah.
All right, so I just want to make sure that we're not, that nothing goes in there. That "and" that's at the end of Chamber of Commerce is going to drop, is going to come up to after the architect.
It's actually going to the architect, yeah.
Okay, all right, perfect. All right, anything else on this article? Okay, anything else from planning?
No.
Okay.
Nope, so I got, I've got those changes.
All right, is there a motion?
I may make a motion, and we approve the wording for appointment of the Design Review Committee, allowing for the amendment of changing the comma after disciplines and moving up to after Planning Board.
Okay. Yep, and then approving the article overall.
Yeah, and approving the article overall.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I should have asked if there's any discussion, but I assume there wasn't. Okay, excellent. What's next?
Okay, the next article relates to the temporary sale of horticultural products. So if you go to page 34, that's where we're going to insert this. It's at the top of page 34. So the, this is the language that was arrived at at the last Planning Board meeting on, in January. And then again, you know, the, the ZBA reviewed all of them. So, you know, we added a couple temporaries and, you know, horticultural products. So on, you know, the bottom of this first page that you're looking at is, you know, the new language that would go in about temporary outdoor sales of holiday trees, breeds, or similar horticultural products. And then the, just because they go together, I'll do both of them. Then at the top of page two is the use table, which is on page 44 in the zoning bylaw. And again, the terminology, you know, is just reflected from the definition, temporary outdoor sales of holiday horticultural products. And, and it would be allowed across the business districts and the industrial district.
So those are two separate articles that we should consider, but we consider them together?
They are two separate articles, but I just talked about them together because it's the same thing. So one is the definition of, you know, to define what is a temporary outdoor sale of holiday trees, breeds, or similar horticultural products. And then the table gives it a home.
Gives it a home.
Where, where is this allowed or not allowed.
Okay. So Mr. Frederica Baum?
Yes.
As the zoning enforcement officer, is there anything within this article that's drafted that causes you any concern?
No, as a matter of fact, I approached Kathy about this. We had a situation in town where, historically, we've had somebody coming in and selling Christmas trees as a batted commercial thing every year. And nobody's really complained about it. We did have somebody come in wanting to do, came to my office, wanted to get permission to sell Christmas trees. And we have, we couldn't find a way to allow them to do it.
Okay.
But in the meantime, historically, there was always usually somebody in town, you know, that has come into town to sell Christmas trees. Adding on top of that, you know, what if you have somebody that wants to sell as a fundraiser, Christmas trees in front of the stores in, on Route 20 of the West Main Street, you know, strip, if you will? I don't have anything that really allows it, okay? And there are other towns that do allow it by putting in the zoning, where it is allowed, it's defined, okay? And you have to be careful about calling it Christmas or whatever, so it's, it's a holiday. And, you know, by extension, it's, you know, roses on Valentine's Day, flowers on Easter, and Mother's Day, you know, that sort of thing. Not that I want to legitimize it, but I want to find a way to allow it in not being really contestable. And I really don't want to be the guy that shuts down the lemonade stand.
Right.
Okay, because that's not what this community is about. So I think as it's written, I think it covers all the bases we need to.
Okay. Would kids selling lemonade have to get a permit under this?
Hmm?
Kids selling lemonade, do they need to get?
Kids can sell anything they want.
Okay, okay, excellent.
Your girls go cook.
That's, you're the kind of zerd.
I don't worry about trees.
That's excellent.
Town shut down free house.
Shut down what? What did you just say?
Is it going to affect the Boy Scouts wreath sales?
No.
They've basically been selling, like, I'm confused about this.
When the, when the Boy Scouts sell their, sell their wreaths, okay, usually, it's typically through a business area in town, okay? I, up until. I, up until this point, I really don't have a space where I can allow it within the existing zoning code, okay? This will allow it with legitimacy.
Okay. And in terms of the use of the word temporary, you don't need us to do anything in terms of defining that for you, you're good? Okay. Amy, anything from you on this? Michelle?
I'm good.
Carrie?
Um, I think you had actually mentioned before the flower sales that are more than just, you know, holiday-related. Does this cover them so that they could still do what they say you're on the roadside? I think you brought this-
Yeah, across the street from my office, which is eighty-eight Main, so at the top of Harvey Industries, there's a, somebody puts a little flower stand there, would that be covered under this?
We, we added flowers-
Mm-hmm.
At the last meeting.
It's a, well, the only reason I ask is that's kind of like from spring through fall.
Yeah.
So it's a little more than-
I'd have to look at that in terms of it being, you know, what it is-
I don't want that person to get in trouble, I'm sorry I said that, like, in, on air.
Well, it's a very visible spot.
It is, um, but it just, you know, it does happen.
To limit it to holidays.
Right.
And I don't know what their business practice has been in the past.
Okay.
But we'll take a look at it this summer or, or if I find out who it is, I'll talk to them and see if we can work something out.
Okay.
Well, because I was just going to suggest, and maybe this defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do, if you actually just took out the word "holiday" in the matrix, would that solve that problem? In the zoning, rather than specify holiday, I don't know. I realize the purpose is just to deal with the wreath and Christmas, uh, holiday trees, wreaths and similar products, but-
It'd become too broad if you-
Yeah, maybe.
Thing is, if, if, if you go that route, and it's kind of a double-edged sword, uh, what constitutes a holiday? You know, if you do enough research, there's a holiday every, every day of the year.
Oh, true.
Okay. So whether you leave it in or take it out-
Okay, that makes sense.
You know, I, I think it's a, it's, it's, it's kind of a six of one, half dozen of the other.
Gotcha.
We, you know, the whole, the whole, or original intent of this bylaw was for Christmas trees. And then, you know, the, um, you know, we, we don't, we just, we can't use the word "Christmas" anymore, so that's where it was then changed to "holiday" and, um, I think you're right, Baum, I think you can find a holiday.
You can, that's true.
National Bagel Day, or, or Mail Carrier Day, I don't know. I don't know why that popped into my head. But anyways, it's-
Okay. I haven't heard that one yet. Put together a petition for that one after the town meeting, okay? Anthony, anything from you on this one?
I just, the only thing I think on this is there should be some definition around what temporary means, or what if this, there should be a start and a stop, some kind of defining thing, because I think you could-
Well, it's probably easier to come up with a stop because it's the day after the holiday.
No, no, as we talked about, it's not a holiday, right? So, it could be any time around the year. I just think somebody could probably bend the rules around this if they wanted to open up shop, whether it was year-round or, you know, for an extended period of time. But, I mean, I'm not really bending this, I just, I think it's, there should be a timeline.
I mean, it's, if you want to do that, I mean, thinking of all the holidays we have, what would be the most appropriate? Probably thirty days. Thirty days prior to the holiday.
Right. So, I mean, what we could do, and I would defer to you as the zoning enforcement officer, is leave it as is, and then if it needs further definition, we can add definition into that. If you find that you're getting a lot of pushback on that term, if you think it's easier to just define it now, we could just define it now and put an end to it.
I, 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 you know, I've been here a year and a half, this is only the first time I've heard of it. And I'm trying to, you know, look in the crystal ball and see what else we're going to come up with. And I can't really see that many people selling that amount of fresh flowers and wreaths and trees and things, you know, in the next year.
The people start complaining.
You know, so, I think if we get this far, um, make it legitimate, and if we do have issues, we can always bring it up and leave it a date.
Right.
What gets tricky about that, too, we talked about this at one of the other meetings, is that, because there's not a permit that's necessary for this, you don't, you don't, you don't know when someone starts it. You know, they don't have to come in to, to the-
Right.
Building Department or to the Board of Selectmen to get a permit to do this, you know, whereas with a temporary sign, you have to get a permit. So, you know, there's a date stamp in the building department's office that they know when, you know, I think it's forty-five days or whatever it is, you know, so we know exactly when it starts and stops.
Right.
Whereas this, you know, people aren't getting, um, you know, it gets a little onerous if you're going to start putting a permit attached to this.
Right. That guy who sells the roses down on Route twenty on Valentine's Day, I'm sure would be really irritated if he had to get his one-day permit.
Yeah. I think he's there, you know, a couple days before, and-
Yep.
You know, they're probably half price the day after, and that's like the extent of it.
Right. Okay. All right, so, anything else on this article? These two articles, I should say, so this would be the article, um, for adding in on seven oh five oh two oh, and then the article for amending the table of uses.
If you could take two separate votes, Teresa.
Oh, okay, so let's do the first one, which is adding in language at seven oh five oh two oh.
I make a motion to approve the article to be inserted on page thirty-four for the temporary outdoor sales of holiday trees, wreaths, or similar horticultural products.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then the table of uses?
No, everybody is okay with it?
Yep.
Okay. I make a motion to approve article, uh, to see if the town will vote to amend part seven of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough zoning bylaw, section seven oh five oh thirty, table of uses, table one, table uses, part B, commercial and industrial by adding the text shown underlined, or to take action relative thereto. Um, and this is for temporary outdoor sales of holiday horticultural products, to be inserted on page forty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Next one.
The next article, um, you go to page seventy-five in the zoning bylaw, um, under section seven dash zero eight dash zero two zero, special term required. And, um, this was the text that was arrived at, um, in conjunction with the zoning board of appeals. They did make a change, and the proposed language is, is as it's shown here, that the, what would be added is, if, if, the, um, part of the sentence before would obviously be taken out. The new language is, is a similar or less detrimental use. And then, the rest of the language that is stricken, um, in one and two would also be stricken, under A. And the zoning board of, zoning board of appeals had, um, you know, a lengthy discussion about this particular section. And, um, Amy had presented some language also to them, and, um, whi- which I think at the time they thought was a little overreached at this point, and arrived at, at this language. This is slightly different, you know, than what, than what we had at the last meeting, which- what was written was is a similar or more restrictive use. And, um, and they preferred the language of is a similar or less detrimental use.
And so, would that change, was the entire zoning board of appeals in agreement on this?
Yes.
It was, okay.
Yeah.
All right, Amy, anything else on this?
I do, um, I just wanted to ask a couple questions, probably more to Bob. And maybe I'll pass this down just for a second, because I might have to look at this. It's from the, um, CPTC, TC.
So you just, yeah.
They should have enough, yeah, for Bob. For Bob, and you want me to bring it down from Kathy's here?
So is this different than what the ZBA agreed to?
Old questions, I'm just asking questions from this piece of paper, from central mass planning. And, um, on question, on page eighteen is, um, I put some stars next to it, there's a one, two, and a three. And for the second one, it says, "Where local zoning allows for expansion or change of the pre-existing non-conforming uses or structures, the expansion or change must comply with the current zoning requirements." I was just wondering, the way ours is worded, so it has to get less detrimental, but it doesn't have to comply with the local zoning ordinance? Because the way I read it from the state code is it, it has to. So, I mean, I think, why I'm asking is, um, I've learned a lot since the last meeting. We first talked about this in November, and last month, there was a selectmen's meeting where there was a car lot going from non-conforming use to non-conforming use, and I asked the town, oh, do they have to go in front of the ZBA? Which I understand they don't, the answer is no, because it was a non-conforming lot to non-conforming lot, and they were staying exactly the same, they weren't adding more cars, so-
And the use, and the use had not been abandoned for longer than two years. So they are statutorily grandfathered for the use.
Yeah, it's different than this non-conforming.
Right, well, this would be not, so if they added twelve cars versus their ten, I'm just, I don't know how many numbers, but if they added to it, then it would have changed. So, what I was understanding from that is if you have non-conforming to lot to non-conforming lot, and it stays exactly the same, it never has to go in front of the ZBA. So, where we write is similar or less detrimental, similar would be like, say, the lot went from ten to twelve. It's the same thing, maybe adding two more, so the ZBA would have to approve it then?
No, no, you're, you're, I, I, I think you're confusing lots with uses. And it's a different section of the Massachusetts general law. So, if a, if a use-
Yep.
Okay, is, has been abandoned-
Right.
And whether or not it's a used car dealer or not, a, any use. If it ha, if it's been abandoned and it's been over two years, then, then they've lost all grandfathering.
Right. Well, that's, and I know, maybe I'm saying confusing, but they're grandfathered, if they say exactly the same, they're grandfathered. So they're non-conforming because the bylaw has changed, but they're grandfathered, so they don't have to go in front of the ZBA, and I get that.
Yeah.
But if they did change, if they added, say, they were a non-conforming use of a car lot, and they changed by growing in any shape or form, say they add more cars, or they expand their lot, then they have to go in front of the ZBA?
Yeah. But it's the same use. It, it, well, but the, the, there's, um, it, there's court cases that if, if, say, ju, um, like, there, um, I don't know what the, the, the name of the court case is, but there's one about a, a junkyard.
Yep.
And, and they, um, and the, the junkyard bought additional land, so the junkyard was considered non-conforming, because, you know, zoning didn't allow it anymore. And they bought additional land, and so they just said, well, we're, we're just, you know, we're still a junkyard, we, we can do this. And, and it went, I don't know if it went all the way up or not, but the, um, the court ruled that, that, no, you're not, you're, you're expanding your use, you're not, you're, you're changing your use, you know, even though it's the same use, you're expanding it, so you're going to go back and you're going to go through zoning. So, but what you're talking about, Amy, is two different things. You're talking about zoning, and then you're talking about a license from the Board of Selectmen. So, so how the selectman may or may not change a used car license, I, that's-
Right.
I don't know if you know anything about that, but I don't.
Well, we had to do it down the street, near Bratlett Street. He also went in front of the selectmen, and he was adding a lot more cars, so that was expanding his non-conforming use. So I think in that use, he was going to have to go in front of the ZBA again.
The, um, a- again, if they're expanding their use, yes.
Right, okay, so I'm just-
But again, I don't, I, I can't speak to the number of cars.
Right.
I don't, I don't know, that's between the selectmen and the police department, how they determine that.
Okay, but what I, I guess what I'm saying here is I do like the wording better, is similar or less detrimental use. But I'm not sure if I changing the wording is actually having an effect. Like, the effect that I was looking for when I first started talking about this in November was, say you're going from a, a golf course to a baseball, but that's changing the zoning, like it's going from residential to business, is that considered less detrimental, or would it still have to go through the same process? I'm just, because, I'm just thinking, because the point of this was, it, it costs the developers a lot of money, and it also costs the neighbors and a lot of money and a lot of time. And if we allow non-conform to non-conforming, so you're grandfathered, that's great. But I didn't want to, I wanted to try to stop where they can go from non-conforming to any non-conforming. Because right here in central mass planning, it says you can. A local government may choose to allow for such changes or extensions, however, the statute does not compel this allowance. If the law were such that any property owner had the right to change a non-conforming use to any other use, so long as a new use was not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, non-conforming uses would tend to exist in perpetuity, never fully take effect. Oh, any comprehensive municipal plans for regulating uses would never fully take an effect. And we're going forward to the master plan, and there are a couple pages there where we have, you know, Business East, Business West, and there might be businesses there that don't conform with our zoning. But as long as we're allowed to change and grow, the neighbors will have to go through the process, the developers have to go through the process. I think it's a, it's a time and money thing.
I was just, are you trying to eliminate the, a growth, the non-conforming use altogether? So once somebody stops, when, once somebody decides, I'm, I'm going out of business, somebody with a non, let's say my office was a non-conforming use, so let's say I decided that I'm, I've had enough of this, I'm retiring, checking out. So, my business is no longer operating there, if somebody else wanted to go in and run a different business in that space, you would try and get rid of that altogether, say, no, you can't do that, because it's a different use.
As long as you comply to the zoning, where in Business East or Business West, there's plenty of options, there's housing, there's stores.
No, but I, I'm trying to just understand what your goal is.
Right, that is my goal.
So you would just say, no more, like, you said, if the current owner of the non-conforming use business goes out of business, then no more non-conforming use.
No, I still think grandfathering, you can't, that's always going to be able to happen, whether or not we have a bylaw for non-conforming. If you're a gas station, you can still be a gas station.
So it's the same, you, you would be okay with the same use?
Same use or anything that-
But not any different non-conforming use?
As long as it applies to the, um, zoning regulations, like if you're in Business East, you'd have plenty of things to choose under Business East. So say you bought a gas station, you paid for a gas station, you can sell it as a gas station, you're not going to lose any money because you could sell it as the same thing you bought. You could also sell it for anything else that falls underneath Business East. I'm just saying-
So you would say no change to non-conforming use? You either, you either keep the present use, whether you change ownership or not, or find another business that conforms?
Right. That's what I was saying.
So you would actually-
I think, yeah, that was, that was my second question.
Like, why wouldn't you just delete this whole paragraph?
Well, that was my second question, I didn't think of it till after the last selectmen's meeting. I was going to ask if by deleting this, if that would be the outcome. So you could still continue, I was afraid before, if I deleted it, if you were a gas station, you wouldn't be able to be a gas station. But now I know, if you're a gas station, you can still be a gas station, then I feel like I'm not affecting the current business. And you can still conform to anything else that's allowed in that business district. So now you're still, you're getting better, less detrimental. But it doesn't give the option for someone to come in and say, all right, well, you're a gas station, so now I want to be a car wash. And I don't think that's less detrimental, so it's, it's like me against you, who, who's, who says what is more detrimental?
The zoning board of appeals.
Exactly, the zoning board of appeals.
That's, that's their priority.
I mean, that's, that's what state statute outlines.
And, and what we gave ZBAs to take a look at and approve was this language. So, I don't think that, literally on the eve of having to approve this, to go on the warrant, we can now say, let's get rid of it altogether.
Well, I would talk to them, yeah, my point was, I tried to talk about it with this board in November, December, and January, and I was put off until the ZBA. This is the first time I can talk about it in front of the planning board.
But you, but this is, this is your language.
It isn't my language.
But this, well, this is an amendment of your language.
Right, and then I-
You brought this forward, but now, now on the eve of having to vote on this, you want to change it again.
I just wanted to ask the questions, if this went away altogether, would that mean, I'm asking Bob, if this whole paragraph went away, would that mean that-
Which paragraph are you referring to?
Um, article page seventy-five?
Mm-hmm.
The A.
Yep.
So if, say if that paragraph went to get away altogether-
Yep.
That would mean if you were a gas station, I'm just using that because it's an example, you could continue as a gas station, or you could continue as a business that conformed with the zoning you ran.
Okay, this paragraph has to stay, because the zoning board of appeals may grant the special- Okay. This paragraph has to stay, because the zoning board of appeals may grant the special permit to change.
Right. Well, I'm saying if it went away, it doesn't really have to stay. Bolton doesn't have it.
No, it needs to stay, because who else is gonna give the special permit to change a non-conforming use in accordance with the?
She wants to get rid of the non-conforming use altogether.
Can't do it.
But it says right here on CPDC, page seventeen. A local government may choose to allow such changes and extensions, however, the statute does not compel this allowance.
I, I, have you, have you researched where in town we have non-conforming uses?
That was gonna be another question too, and I know it's late, but I wasn't allowed to ask in December or January.
But that's a huge project. Like, that would be a huge project that, even if you brought this forward in, in September.
No, my question was gonna be.
It's a big project.
How many non-conforming uses have come in front of the ZBA, and how many were actually passed?
But that's not the whole problem, Amy. Part of the problem is that. If, if my building were a non-conforming use.
Right.
And I shut down my law practice.
Right.
And, um, my neighbor shuts down his real estate practice. There can't be any retail operation on that first floor, but it is not laid out for residential. And so the owner of that building literally has an entire floor that they can't do anything with anymore, if we eliminated this.
Why couldn't it be any retail?
Because it's a non-conforming use, and you're saying that if, if it's a non-conforming use, and it's gonna go to another non-conforming use, you wanna get rid of that. And so if that were zoned, I don't know what it's, I honestly don't know what it's zoned. But if it were zoned only residential, and there was no, nothing else allowed there. You're basically saying to the owner of that building, sorry, you can't do anything with that space. Unless you decide to rehab the entire thing and invest tens of thousands of dollars to do that.
You could do the same thing that you're doing.
Only if somebody wants the space. You know how hard it is to find a sole practitioner to go into, in, in the legal field? That, nobody, there, there are so few of us left. I mean, there was this huge article on it recently. It's just, but that's the problem, is that you're, you're making it really difficult for parking owners to keep their businesses if you eliminate this. Because there are some really, I'm sure in town, there are more non-conforming uses than we know about. And if, if those businesses stop, and you're preventing anyone else who's going in there with a different business, that's less detrimental or equally detrimental. Um, you are really inhibiting the, the profitability for that landowner.
I don't, well, I guess from being on the master plan, this, if you're trying to get them, like, say the downtown. If you're trying to ever get to your goal, as long as you allow the use to change to whatever they wanted to change, you're, you've got a major loophole. You're never gonna meet the goals. Like, this master plan was a waste of time.
Well, I think that's, a little backup on that.
If I can sag.
We've, throughout this entire master plan process, we've never talked about non-conforming uses or structures. So, so we've never had that conversation, and that's really a very detailed conversation that wouldn't take place on a master plan level. Um, I also think that, you know, for, for anyone to really understand this, including myself. You know, this is just two pages out of what looks like a many-page, you know, document. So I think everyone would need to, you know, take a look at this, you know, whole document to get the context here. Um, and then, I mean, Amy, you and I both were at that ZBA meeting, and they talked about, you know, the changes that you wanted to make. That they all felt, you know, were, were too overreaching, and that it was, you know, too extensive. And so this was the language that they arrived at, and that's, that's what this planning board asked the ZBA to take a look at. Was, did they, did they agree with any change to begin with? And then, and then if they did wanna make a change, you know, what change did they wanna make? So, I mean, this language has to go, you know, is due today, so I mean, it has to go tomorrow, um, to the town administrator. So I think.
I'm just, I guess I'm just disappointed that I didn't get to speak in December and January, because I didn't get to ask these questions. And now on the eve of the night, we're making the decision, I'm told, like, it's too late.
So if, um, so when we first talked about this, when we, tonight. Um, you liked it, cause we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I think the fact that we're heading in the right direction is a good thing. I find it as a complicated subject. I don't really understand it. Um, I'd have to sit there and probably go to a class in it. I just don't understand. I agree with Teresa. I think it's an enormous amount of data we need to collect and figure out. Might be the same thing where we talked about solar, like, is it solar just, are we looking at large? Should we look at small? Do we look at medium? Do we look at this and that? It's a complicated subject, right? So maybe as a board, we just agree with, we're heading in the right direction. We think this is better language. And then if we all as a board agree next year, we could try to chip away with this a little bit more. And figure out, you know, where, maybe we go one business district at a time, and see where things might be happening that are making, maybe it's, we wanna preserve more downtown. So let's focus on downtown with it, not so concerned about east or west, or maybe are concerned about that. I think that would be, I think I'm happy that the fact that you looked into this and you're, you feel like we're heading in the right direction. I just do think it's a twelfth hour, and I don't really understand all this. So I feel like I'd be going to town meeting not knowing a lot, to guide people if they asked me on how to vote. But I do think that if there's one special section, whether you think it's downtown that we should look into, and all the other board members agree. We could start that, you know, in the new year, if the chair agrees as well. I mean, that's what we just have to do it. It's a big town. I mean, not with our huge town, but we have several districts we'd have to look into for non-conforming. You know, we would start with maybe, let's look at downtown business. How's downtown business doing with non-conforming? Where do we have it? Where does it exist? What are we seeing? What have we seen in the past? And then we could make a decision, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm okay going in the right direction.
Yeah. But I'm glad you're happy we're going in the right direction. I like the language. You know, the ZBA seem to be, everyone seems to be agreeing that we're heading there, you know?
And, honestly, I don't think it's defeating the master plan.
Oh, it's just Judy, we went to a village bylaw class with Judy Barrett, and part of the village bylaw, and talked about the master plan, and said. If you have a use variance or non-conforming, you could be making it null and void, because you have a loophole. Where as long as you allow the use variance, and you wanna get, clean up one area, there always is gonna be the chance, it just keeps continuing or changing.
So we think it goes to Michelle's point, which is, you know, let's take the time to do that research. And figure out if there is a specific area in town that we should be protecting, then let's examine that area. That's fine. But I think it's, it's difficult to, even with a six-month lead time, to actually have the right answer to that question. Whether we get rid of this altogether. And I wouldn't place money on it, but I would bet that the ZBA would not say, would not agree that they should, that it should, we should get rid of it altogether.
So that's a really big change for this town, and it's gonna impact a lot of, of landowners in this town.
But when?
Well, I mean, hopefully you're right. Hopefully it's not a lot, and hopefully the, the impact will be really small. But unless the impact is zero, if even one person is adversely impacted by it, we have to give very serious consideration whether it's appropriate at all.
Right. Well, so far I've been on like three of them, and it's always the neighbors that are more affected, you know, we worry about.
And they, but the neighbors are the ones who have to show up at the ZBA.
Right.
And say, this is what the problem is with this proposed use. And being the neighbors, a butters to a butters within three hundred feet, with a substantial impact to them, they're the ones who have the right of appeal. So they have to be proactive, and they have to show up at those meetings, and they have to say something.
I won. Took me a whole year.
So, and, and, but that's how like, that's how stuff gets done. You know that. That's where, that's what happened with the baseball fans, right?
Right, and it was a whole year, it was a whole.
Right, but that's how, that's how the process works, and you can't eliminate the process. It's, it's due process. It's guaranteed that, under certain amendments, you know, conferred under the constitution.
It says right here, you could. The statute does not compel the allowance, so you could.
But, but you can eliminate due process, right? They have a right to be heard on their application, and you have a right as a citizen, and then under the butter, to voice your concerns over it. And then the town has the right to weigh in and make a measured decision on it. You know, and that's, that's how the process should work, right?
I do have one more question, though, for Bob, and it doesn't have to be tonight. If you can look into it at town council. On page eighteen, and Kathy, you do have the whole packet, if you guys wanna look at it. Where it says one, two, on the second paragraph that I put stars next to, where it says second. Where local zoning allows for expansion or change of pre-existing non-conforming uses, which we do. The expansion or change must comply with current zoning requirement. I was just wondering if we could check on that. Like, is that something that has to happen? And that was my big question with that.
To be honest with you?
Yeah.
I don't know where this comes from.
Okay, well, we have the whole packet. Kathy has it, she can.
Yeah, and I can't address that tonight.
Oh, I know, I didn't.
You know, I, I'd like to know who wrote this, and underwater thirty, he wrote this, or if, whoever wrote this.
Okay.
Um, because all I see is something on paper that, I, 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 I have to be perfectly blunt. I think you're cherry picking.
Well, I just wanted to ask about it.
I'm willing to answer the question, but I need all the documentation, and I can't give it to you, you know, in, in a discussion like this.
I can email you the whole document. I just said going forward, not tonight.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Okay. So you feel good about we're heading in the right direction?
I do. I do feel good we're heading in the right direction. I just had a couple questions like that.
Okay.
And I understand you don't have the answers tonight, but if we could get them, I'd be interested.
Okay. You good with this?
I agree.
Okay. Carrie, anything else on this?
Um, no, I mean, I, I get what Amy's saying, a lot of what she's saying, and I do remember that village bylaws class. And the comment was basically, you know, to be careful of these types of things, the non-conforming and the, uh, use variances. When you're, you know, do, do they still belong or not? The one thing that, I, I understand the argument about, you know, I don't wanna make things difficult for landowners. And trying, like you mentioned, with people can't sell the bottom floor. But part of me has a pers, I, I have a perception that sometimes it's used as a loophole in some cases, where, um. You know, I wish there was a way, and maybe this is the right direction, the way to do it, just to make it less of what appears to me to be a loophole. To do something that maybe isn't in the best interest of the town, but kinda circumvents what would need to be done otherwise. Maybe you'd otherwise need a variance, but you can get a non-conforming use instead. So just to consider if we do wanna settle on this for now, and then go forward, maybe figure out how we can make it, you know, tighten it up a little bit.
The variants in the non-conforming use are two completely separate, separate issues altogether. If, if the, if the, if his variance is required, you can't bypass it with a non-conforming use.
Well, I just noticed in the last ZBA application, it said something like, I was originally told this should have been a variance, but I convinced them it was a non-conforming use. So it seemed odd, like, if it was deemed to be a variance, a use variance in one case, how did it flip to a non-conforming use? Uh, maybe that was just my.
I don't know what, what case you're talking about.
We said.
It was the recent one.
The one they, they came in before us, last time we were here, to just explain it. It's the, up on West.
Three twenty-nine.
Oh, three twenty-nine, three thirty-three.
Yeah.
The Lam, Lambadini.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I think the difference is, I, did, wasn't the, wasn't the confusion that, um, they thought it was a completely different use coming in? But in fact, it's just a, it's tacking on to a prior consistent use?
Um.
Sorry, that was, it's a little confusing the way I said that.
And I, and I don't have the, I didn't bring the file.
It's okay. Here nor there. Maybe that's not a good example, but just to, you know, something like that, maybe they're not related. But just making sure that it's not a loophole, that it's actually something that's wor, you know, it's good, good for the town. So that's my only comment there.
And I think that's where we have to make sure that our planning department and our town, our zoning enforcement officers. They're the ones who make those final decisions as to whether it should be variance versus non-conforming use versus special permits or whatever. And I think that we have to trust their judgment on that.
And, and, and to be completely honest, more times than not, the two of us, and a lot of times in conjunction with the town engineer. We'll sit down and we'll go over the zoning determination form, or, or sit down with the client and figure out what they wanna do and how they wanna do it. And, and we'll do our best, we'll put our heads together, so it's not just a unilateral decision. You know, cause, so there's, you know, there's a lot of group participation in trying to figure out exactly what they wanna do, how they wanna do it. And whether or not it is a variance or a special permit, or if it's an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use or whatever. Um, call that into consideration.
Right. Anything else?
No.
Just wondering if you're good with the language as, as drafted?
Yes.
Anthony?
So I, if I understand the direction that Amy is going in, I, I tend to agree with her, and I think that this does need further exploration. Obviously, we don't have time to do that now, but I, I think it should, we shouldn't be closed for, you know, future. Um, but I do, I'm, I'm much happier with the language as it's been modified here.
Okay. Okay. There's nothing else. I will entertain another motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, article to see the town to vote to amend part seven of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough zoning bylaw, section seven oh eight oh twenty. Special permit required by deleting the text shown in the strike through and adding the text shown underlying, or take any action relative thereto. As noted in the, uh, paragraph below, and this would be inserted on page seventy-five.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, let's talk about signs, Kathy.
Okay, this next one, um, there was, there wasn't any change from the last time we reviewed this on, uh, January fifteenth. Um, so this is the, you know, the language, um, uh, that Bob and I had come up with about, um, you know, using what, what the industry uses. For, um, what's called the electronic message center.
Okay, so Carrie, you had a whole bunch of questions on this, so why don't we start with you on this one?
Okay. And some of them Bob already answered, but for the benefit of everybody else, I'll go through some of them. So I had asked about first timing is one of the questions that I had. So we currently have ten, I'm sorry, midnight until six AM. So my question was, now, a, as we start to pu, if we start, if we approve electronic signs in certain areas, do we wanna change that? And Bob had explained that it would be, it sounded like the case was, we'd, if we singled them out as electronic only has this requirement, but everybody else can do this. Was that like the heart of the matter for that issue?
That's the heart of the matter.
Yeah.
Um, plus, if you're trying to do, again, grandfathering comes into this. If you go through and put under the basic requirements of all signs, that the new regulation is between ten and six, where they have to be off. Okay, every sign that's currently out there is grandfathered. And to be able to be put on from midnight, um, to six, instead of ten to six.
Okay. So what I had wondered was, and you hadn't heard about, but Kathy, I think you mentioned this before, sunset clause. So if we, say we talked about changing the time to ten to six, or some towns do like an hour after the business closes.
Well, that, the sunset clause only works if you take it out of the zoning bylaw. You would have to take the sign, the whole sign section, and make it a general bylaw, instead of a zoning bylaw. And then in a general bylaw, that's where you can put a sun, what they call the sunset clause. Meaning that everyone has, um, again, let's use the signs as an example. Um, so you come up with a whole new sign bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, and you move it, you know, town, it would need town meeting action, you move it out of zoning and into the general code. Um, and then you would have, you could, you don't have to, but you could have a clause in there saying that, you know, everyone has, um. You know, from the adoption of this bylaw, you know, for the next five years, or ten years, or what, you know, to comply with the new bylaw.
Okay.
And then, and, and then, you know, so, so everyone, that sunset clause means everyone's got time, the existing signs have time to, you know. Order new signs, comply with the new bylaw, but it's only if it's a general bylaw.
Okay, so you can't make a general bylaw for a sunset that applies to a zoning bylaw, that are two separate pieces?
Right. Right.
So really, we'd be grandfathering in whatever. There's only two right now, but then there's illuminated.
All the illuminated signs.
Illuminated plus two elect, I think, oh, no, I'm sorry, more than two electronic signs. That's right, because we have a couple of others. Okay. So they would all have to be grandfathered?
They would be grandfathered, yeah. And that's, that's the, um, the, you know, kinda going back to Amy with the non-conforming. That's the, um, the, um, not the beauty, but that's like what Massachusetts is all about. It's so different than the rest of the country as far as zoning, because you, you're a lot, you have this grandfathering in Massachusetts. That the rest of the country, there might be like one or two other states that has grandfathering. You go anywhere else and people are like, what? Like, you, you get to keep the old? You know, you, whatever the new is, is that's what everyone should be, but it's just not how it works in Massachusetts. So you, if you change the bylaw, if you, if you put a separate section, or, or a separate, you know, in this electronic message center. If you said they can only be on from, um, I, I, I don't know, you know, six to ten at night, then that's only the new ones going forward.
Okay.
So the existing ones are, are what's in the, they conform to the.
Okay. Otherwise, it would have to be a special condition put on by the ZBA, which some do have right now.
Yes, they, yep, they.
Does just one sign have that, or do they, do we know? It's okay if you don't know, I'm just not sure.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, some people have asked, um, to have their signs on longer.
Actually, there's one, there is one current case where the ZBA has granted permission for a sign to be on, um, longer than midnight, I believe.
Was it one of the medical, the urgent care or something?
No, I think it's the anytime fitness, or the fitness facility up at the shops, because they're open twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
And they, I, I think they asked permission. And they, I, I think they asked permission, or did they table that to come back for another time?
We can check on that.
We can check on that.
I don't know off the top of my head.
But they either requested it or didn't request it, I forget, but they did talk about that because they're a twenty-four seven operation. And the sign they wanted to keep illuminated is actually facing Route nine, because they got special permission to put a second sign on the, which basically illuminates onto Route nine. You don't see it anywhere from Route twenty.
The other questions that I asked, what came out of the basic requirements, so I, I just wanted to learn about the animation piece and also the non-business related content. And I think what Bob had said about non-business related content made sense. I, just in thinking about the community signs, the different things that go on in town that people, you know, it's for the good of the community, I think you put it that way. So I don't know what we need to do about that, if anything.
Like I, like I said in our email, it's, it's, it's a point that's worth investigating and perhaps changing, because the strict regulation says that only signs, the content of the sign can only be used for the business that is conducted on that particular property. Okay? That's pretty restrictive, especially when it comes time to have any kind of sign for the good of the community, because those signs are spread all over the place. And, you know, that goes contrary to what that first requirement is. So again, because it's close to date and everything has to be buttoned up, that might be something that would be worthwhile put on the table for discussion during the next year. Okay? Because like I said in the email, if, if we hold that strictly to a word, what's going to happen is I'm not going to be able to allow any of these signs like apple harvest and sign up for soccer and lacrosse and baseball. Holiday trolley and, you know, you name it. One of the things that really struck me when I came to town was that in the fall, right around September, all the way through to the end of the Christmas season, is that almost every weekend, there is some sort of community group doing something, and they all have their signs. And by and large, they're really responsible with them. They put them up, they have the day, they take them down, no harm, no foul, everything's great. I think that's a big part of the fabric of the community. And, you know, historically, the building inspectors have always taken kind of a blind eye to all those signs, because we know that it's better for the community to have it than not. And if I was to, you know, so we've always kind of taken a blind eye to that one particular item. Having said that, maybe it's worth a look for the next...
Right, so in the future, would we want to say, put something like, for the good of the, signs for the good of the community, or just something to cover that? So because if you're not here in the next, you retire in ten years and the next person comes in and they say, "I don't want any of this," then...
It's possible.
I, I'm confused. Are we just talking about, are we talking about digital or just other side?
Just the basic requirements as they apply to everything, which would also...
Because I thought we addressed this before, Kathy, about all these event signs. We put something in the bylaw towards the end of it that people, whoever, I thought we did that earlier.
Yeah, there's, in the, I, I think, yes, to your question, and I think to Carrie's question, Carrie was asking in general, just do, do these basic requirements, do they apply to all signs in, in related zoning bylaws? So the, the ones that you're talking about, Michelle?
Yeah.
We put, let me just find it. It's in the, it's in the last section for permit not required.
I think we... Number nine.
We had, yes, and the...
Number nine.
Signs for nonprofit organizations. That's basically covered, that in a couple of years from now.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's covered no matter what.
And, and, and just a, a general comment about the sign bylaw. The, when the zoning was redone in two thousand nine, we did not, and it was very, you know, specific, we did not look at the sign bylaw. That portion stayed the same as, as it had been. Because prior to two thousand nine, the planning board underwent a three-year process to update the sign bylaw. It took us three years. And there was a subcommittee of the, of the planning board, and then myself and the building inspector at the time. And, and like I said, we, we went through three years of, of, it was, it, it, it was an intense process, because signs are, it's just, it's, they're expensive, there is the livelihood of, you know, how, how places advertise, and then, and then residents in general are very sensitive to them. So we had group, you know, we had neighborhood meetings, we had, we went to individual businesses. So when the time comes for the zoning bylaw to be, you know, looked at, if, if this board decides to look at it as a whole, or to just take it, you know, by section by section, or, you know, for something that the board's interested in, this sign bylaw, there's going to be some things that are going to have to come out based on a Supreme Court decision of Reed versus Gilbert, and, which all pertain to what content is on a sign. And basically, it came, that, that, like I said, it went to the Supreme Court, it was a church, is that what it was?
I think it was a church.
In Arizona. And, and so they brought it all the way to the Supreme Court, because the town wanted to monitor what the church could put on their sign. And, and so it was determined that you, there's, you cannot zone content on a sign. And we talk about content a little bit in here, so that would, that will come out if we do a re, a relook at this town bylaw.
Okay, so I'm not looking to undo everything that was done. I was just looking at how, I think you recognize that, that, I was just looking at how the basic requirements applied. Oh, yeah.
Just tell you what the, so it wasn't touched in two thousand nine for the rest of the bylaw?
Um, the other piece that I was just looking at from basic requirements is just the flashing, moving, and animated sign, so that that would just apply to electronic without us having to do anything special.
Right. I mean, there are, as I mentioned in the email, there are certain things in terms of duration of the sign itself, whatever is displayed. This talks about and how long that should be up or down. You know, and there are additional definitions that I, that are in there, and that's up for the board to adopt it or hold on to it for next year. There's also a discussion briefly about the transition time from one slide to the next. But, you know, in terms of blinking and things like that, anything other than a, like a two-second slide is, is deemed to be okay in terms of safety and driver's safety driving by. There's a, I think it's a one and a half or two-second suggestion for the transition from one slide to another. There is also, as, that's in here, the proposed language for tonight, is the ability to dim the sign so that it's no more than three point three foot candles above the ambient light level.
Oh, okay, so that currently does not exist at all in our base, okay.
Right. In this particular formula, it's a math formula, it's got square roots and things in it, so, you know, that's going to come back to haunt everybody.
Isn't that what makes it legitimate?
Well...
That's what I was telling them.
But it gives a formula about how to test the sign and under what conditions, so it's a, it's an impartial test.
Right.
I'm already putting money in my budget for next year to buy a light meter, so that if and when the time comes, we can, we can do that. Also, because of the language currently in the zoning code in terms of electronic signs and signs in general, I do have the authority to go to a existing sign and say, "We've had complaints, it's too bright, turn it down," and might I suggest using the national standard? Okay? Because again, in this national standard, it talks about automatically dimming the lights. Okay? So it's not a manual. It talks about, and how to measure the distance away from the light, and how to determine whether or not it's in compliance or not, which I think is a good idea.
And then the last piece that I originally didn't ask, but you provided, was the suggested definitions for the section. So I, I know everybody hasn't seen them.
Right.
Is that something that, is it too late to add in the definitions? I thought it was helpful, so just for the benefit of the board, there's, what is animation? What is dissolve? What is fade? What's flashing? Frame effect? Scroll?
Again, these are from the industry standards, so to speak.
Well, should we include them in our own definitions? I mean, assuming the board reviews them and agrees, but just, or, or is it not necessary?
I'm not sure if they're necessary this year. Again, these I found relatively late in terms of this particular need.
Right, right.
So, you know, in terms of rewriting it to fit these in, I'm, you know, right now we have two in town, EMCs. And from what I've been told is that the dentist at the corner of West Main in the cutoff is moving that sign to his new location, so supposedly, we're going to stay at two. And, you know, maybe this is another one of those points, maybe we can work that into the coming year. You know, because some of these things, some of these may or may not be pertinent to what we want to accomplish.
Okay, I think those are all my questions that we looked at.
But I, but again, I think the biggest issue that I've encountered as a zoning enforcement officer is the brightness. And, you know, I've spoken to Dr. Leheven once or twice, and he's been very compliant, very agreeable to turn it down, and, you know, so far, you know, I've had no further complaints. And likewise with Moe's, I have, you know, who's the other sign in town? I haven't heard any complaints. And, you know, again, you know, I drive by and, you know, it looks okay to me, but if I'm not the...
So what is Saint Bernadette's sign considered? I realize that they're not in the same...
That's an LED, I guess you can call an electronic message center, but it's a very old, old technology.
But would it fall under this new bylaw?
Uh, probably, but I don't know if those signs would have the ability to be dimmable.
Oh, it's okay, I just was curious when you said we only had two, okay.
Yeah. And again, we talk about scrolling messages, those signs are designed to do scrolling messages. I don't know under which guise they were permitted under, because they've been here quite a while. So I, I can't really speak to, you know, number one, the sign's technical abilities, number two, under which bylaw or approval if they were permitted.
Okay. I think that was all my questions.
So based upon the answers, did you have any changes or you okay for now?
Well, I don't know, I'm still, I'm wondering what the rest of the board thinks about the time. I mean, I, I wonder, you know, do we need them to go till midnight? But at the same time, I don't want to create this huge, you know, incongruent bylaw where some people are at this time, some people are at that time. So I don't know if that's a huge impact, is it worth it? Do we, is it bothering people at all? I'm not sure. I'd be interested to see what the board thinks of some of this.
It becomes difficult for the zoning enforcement perspective.
Right, right, for sure.
But if the majority of people are in bed when the signs go off, do we, do we notice?
Right.
I don't know. Anthony, what do you think?
So as, as it relates to the timing, I think that, I think it's just too big of a problem to enforce, probably, with having different times for different people in different zones. So I, I get it, but I just don't know if it is the right thing to do. I just need some help with the districting and what's allowed where. I'm just, I'm still, unless it's me just not understanding it. When I, when I look at like Section G and it says, "Signs in business districts, electric message center may be used as a part of a freestanding sign." To me, that says that it's allowed in business districts, might not, no, it just...
No, so you, you have to go specifically to, to, to G. This is, um...
Oh, so back to the block, okay.
And this is where, from the get-go, when we first did this, well, we've got a G, a one, an A, and then a small one, and then a small A, and then it's, it's horrible. Be that as it may, that's what we have to work with. So when you go specifically to G1C1A, which is on the bottom of page one oh three, that is specifically relating to the freestanding sign in the highway business district. Because the only places that you wanted these signs going forward was in the highway business district and the industrial district.
So... Right. So if you look at, if you look at Section F1A and F1B, it talks about freestanding signs, it doesn't say that they're allowed in that district, the residential districts, and we're not including that as a provision in this amendment.
Okay.
Yeah. So this...
So, yeah, so, so as part of the freestanding sign, which, you know, these businesses are allowed. So as part of the freestanding sign in the highway business district, part of that sign could be the electric message part.
Okay.
So that's, that's what that change is. And the, and then H is the same, you know, wording, and that's just the industrial district. So the only places where this new bylaw is allowing these messages, electronic message center...
Yep.
Is in the highway business, which is Route nine, and then the industrial districts.
Okay. That's, then, I'm fine, it was unclear to me, and so I figured I just wasn't understanding something, which I wasn't.
Any changes or anything? You're good with it as is?
Okay.
Amy?
I just have one question, or maybe two. But going back to Carrie's discussion about time, could you set the time up to be just under the EMS part of it? Not all signs, but maybe go to all signs in the future, but at least start with EMS since we don't have a lot of them now, that they have to automatically shut off an hour after the business closes? Because like if you can set them up to automatically dim, maybe they can set them up to automatically shut off when the business closes too. Like not change it today for all signs, because then it'll be a mess, but maybe just under the EMS signs, because they're the ones who are bright and...
Well, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be bright.
Oh.
I mean, they, they shouldn't be, I mean, because that's what's worked into this bylaw.
Right.
So if they're, like Bob was saying, you know, there's been a couple complaints about one of the signs and they've, and the, he's contacted the owner and they've adjusted it, you know, to, to be less bright. I mean, you certainly could do that, but again, it becomes, now you have two, two different times for different signs.
So, can, so I think with the illumination, you probably should see, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but a sign, one of these signs to be the same as the one we see downtown at the railroad tracks, right? The same level of illumination as that, you know, which...
You mean the Lions Club sign?
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't even compare it to that. I mean, it's all technology, it's solid red LEDs.
But, but I don't think it's brighter than that. Do you? No. So I'm saying it's that subtle where it's like that. I think the concern that I get with changing hours is, is that even though, I don't mean to bring one person out, but the car place Moe's on, on Route twenty got a sign, he might close his doors at five o'clock, I might be driving down there at eight and nine o'clock and go, "Oh, I gotta go there to get my tires changed," right? Because I see his sign on. I don't want us to be detrimental to closing a small business, which they, small businesses need signage to stay afloat. Could be the dentist now doesn't keep his weather and smiley faces on the sign, maybe he does, you know, come in for a cleaning at this price, and people might be driving at night even though he's closed and go, "I need my teeth cleaned," or they're running a special on crowns, or whatever. So I just, my concern is, the more restrictions we put in with signage, just because I've been on the board for so long and I was part of all these meetings, is the more effect you have on small businesses. I remember back when we sat and everyone came and complained about the sandwich boards, and now there's a handful you see, and the whole part of the sandwich boards was to start with the digital signs. You know, I don't, I don't take offense to the digital signs, I know four of you guys do, I don't, but I do agree with Anthony's comment that there's going to be a day when they're going to be a lot less expensive, and you might find some of these businesses along the strip malls that will want to engage in that opportunity, and we've just eliminated it from the bylaw. But if the town doesn't want it, the town doesn't want it. I just, I, I wouldn't be a favor of any changing of the time of any signs from twelve to six, because I think it's an opportunity for the small business owner, you know, at night when people are driving, they can still see their sign, and I would never want to take away that opportunity for that advertisement. It's just harder for, every time we put in something, it's harder for a small business owner to stay open. It's easier for Walmart or the big giants, but not for the small guy. So I, I just want the board to think about it in the next year, as they think about changes to signage, to think about, and we look at the master plan and most likely... look at the master plan, and most likely your downtown, you don't wanna have big box stores in your downtown, you want small businesses in your downtown, how do you keep that? And if you keep layering restrictions, it's really hard to keep small businesses in there, you know? That, that's my whole thing, cause, you know, it's, it's different with the big box store, national chain versus, you know, a, a one guy who has a liquor store, or someone has a craft store, or someone has a food store. So, I'm opposed to the change of time, sorry.
Okay, I wasn't even picturing that, I was picturing like barefoot road people, if they have a big U-Haul sign that's bright at night, like midnight, that's, I guess, what I was thinking.
I think that's when the residents are gonna call the zoning enforcement officer and say, this is really out of control, and then he's gonna ask them to turn-
And so maybe this goes back to what we, we talked about, the non-conforming, we look at what we got now, we, we look for your guidance of whether you hear anything, and if we find in these areas of industrial and highway that maybe a neighborhood's, and the reflection is coming on them, we, we take care of those, but really try to be more sensitive to the business districts that have the smaller businesses, is my suggestion.
Okay, so no changes-
As a lone person who likes digital signs.
Okay.
I will vote in your favor.
You're very brave.
Thank you, for saying that.
Amy, no, um, no changes then to this language at this point for you?
No, and this is just for freestanding, right? They couldn't have an LED sign or an EMS sign on a building. Like, I was standing facing the old town hall, or driving here tonight, I'm like, oh, are they allowed to be on the building? But they're not, right? If you have an EMS sign, it is-
Good question.
Um, well-
They're just eliminated.
We just, we just allow them as part of the freestanding sign.
Okay, so that means they'd be prohibited everywhere else. I just wanted to make sure of that, cause I sat fit, sitting in the town hall tonight in the dark, and I'm like, ooh, imagine a big one on the side of a building.
See, then Michelle and I would be okay with it.
We'd be okay with it.
Plus, plus neon, I love it.
I'm not sure I meant neon. See, you don't like digital, but you like neon.
No, I don't like neon.
Oh, you don't like neon, okay.
No, I don't, I don't.
So this would just be freestanding signs in highway business and industrial?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay, just wanna make sure, right.
Yep, so it can either be the freestanding sign, or it can be part of the freestanding sign.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Great, let's make a motion.
Make a motion to approve article to see the town to vote to amend Part 7 of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough zoning bylaw, Section 709040, Signs B, Definitions D, Basic Requirements G, Signs in Business Districts, One Type, Size, and Number of Signs. There shall be not more than the following on each lot, Highway Business District 1A, Freestanding Sign, H Signs in the Industrial District 3, Freestanding Signs, by adding the text underlined or taken any action relative thereto below. And this will be on pages 99, 101, 103, and 105.
Second.
She had me do this at town meeting, I'll just rattle this off.
Anthony does it.
Yeah, Anthony seconded it, okay.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
All yes.
All right. Um, and then we have the handout that Kathy gave us at the meeting.
Yeah, that was the handout, um-
Okay, it's an email.
Sent to everybody and that you have in front of you is from Carrie.
So then Carrie, why don't you tell us about your handout?
So, um, we've talked a couple times about what to do with the waiver, we had our first applicant come through, and, um, and my perception was that it created a lot of disconnect for us. We went to discuss it last time, but it was super late, so Michelle, you had requested, could we push it to talk more, have more time and more sanity to talk about it now, so I wanted to at least put something down on paper in the event that we talked about it and thought it was a worthwhile endeavor. I personally think that it is, of course, I mean, it's, it's obviously up to the board, but, um, one thing that I did do, Theresa, you'd made a point that I thought was valid, that we went to town meeting, the residents voted on it, and you seemed passionate about that point. So I wanted to go back and kinda look at the genesis of that to see, you know, what was the support, was there an outcry for, what was the support for? And what I, I just wanna point out a couple things that I noticed. Um, one was that it was so late that it wasn't even written on the town warrant that was posted online. I don't know if the one that went to town meeting was any different than what was posted online, I assume not, but the waiver wasn't printed at the ti- so I went back and watched the tapes of the town meeting, and it actually had to be read by the moderator. So the warrant, so the waiver wasn't even written for people to read or look at in advance, it was read by the moderator at, I think it was like 12:30 in the morning at that time. And I think, you know, I, I would make the case that people were tired, nobody wants to be the one to ask questions at, at that time of night, and there really wasn't, um, a way for people to look at it, read it, understand it. Of course, people can discuss at a town meeting, but that was, those are just a couple of things I wanted to note, just to sorta, you know, in thinking about, did residents really push for this? Because I wouldn't want to go against, you know, if there was some sort of resident-driven push, but that didn't seem to be the case in my perception, so just to point that out. But in any case, those, this was, um, this is just taking the density, the table of density and dimensional regulations, and it would just actually cross out the waiver and the footnote, nothing. I don't think I changed anything otherwise. I know I didn't actually.
Anthony?
Um, so I think a few things. I think that, as it, as it relates to the town meeting, um, I, I think after having talked to additional people in town, um, and thinking about how the process was, it was added so late, I think my belief, and, and this isn't just on just thinking, this is talking to other people, people voted for these dimensional and density requirements is what they heard when they were voting. Um, and I think the, the waiver was a, kind of a, an auditory add-on, that, and then just with the, how late it was, I don't think people were putting so much weight into it. Um, you know, I know we haven't seen, you know, we've had one applicant so far, and maybe that'll be it, um, but I think it does stress everyone. It stresses the developers, it stresses the boards, it stresses, um, all the departments, um, to have to go through all these exercises, um, to look at every option every time somebody wants to, to go for a waiver. I think we'd be better off, uh, taking the waiver off.
Amy?
Yeah, I agree with all of that he just said, cause it was added last minute, even our board started questioning, and in the end, four to one voted for it, but it was questioned. Like, tonight we're saying, okay, it's February 5th, and these articles are due tonight. This waiver was added on April 3rd. Like, how, that waiver was added, yet we can't change a word to something we're talking about tonight? I don't know. I just think it was added last minute, and like they said, the people going there that I talked to were in agreement with the minimum lot area and the frontage and the lot width, and no one thought about the waiver, cause it was added last minute. And if they voted no, they were throwing away the whole thing, so they voted to-
Well, but, but hold on, there's always the opportunity to make a motion on the floor of town meeting.
Even most people aren't gonna do that.
But we've seen that happen before at town meeting, we've seen it.
You have to do it in a place you can do it.
At our town meetings, right, so we've seen it happen, where motions have been made to amend the article.
The only thing they'd have to remember, it was just read to them, it wasn't written, so you'd have to remember what the moderator said, interpret it in your head, understand its impact on what you were reading here, and figure out on the fly how to amend that without having it written. I think it would be hard, I don't know, for me it would, in a resident's shoe, I wouldn't know how to do that.
Michelle?
Okay. Um, I actually have a question for Bob. So, if the waiver was removed, and an applicant came forward and had more, needed something similar, they, they, they were less than the 150 feet, would they then have to go to the ZBA for a variance? Okay. If the wa, if you have the waiver now, and the waiver's denied, do they then go to the ZBA for variance?
Um, they, they, I don't wanna answer, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
They, they technically could, but they, they wouldn't, because the, the bylaw lays out what the process is. In order to, because you have a waiver provision, that's where you go. It's directing you to go to the board who can grant the waiver. In this particular case, it's the planning board that can grant the waiver. And then if you choose not to grant the waiver, the, the, the process isn't that, oh, then I'll just go get a variance, or I'll go and apply for a variance, cause the zoning board would say, I'm just saying this in general, okay, the, the zoning board of appeals would say, well, wait a minute, the, the bylaw provides you the method to go get this waiver, and it's with the planning board. So, so they, could, could, so the answer is yes. Could someone technically then end up at the zoning board of appeals? Yes. But any attorney or applicant, you know, worth their reputation is going to say, this, the bylaw says, I go to the planning board.
So, here's my thoughts on this, and I, I really sit on the fence about this. Um, you know, I wasn't happy with the April 3rd meeting, I just, I felt like we had made a decision on the 150 feet, and I didn't want to approve the waiver, but then we talked about how it sort of empowers the planning board a little bit more, in that you can either, um, approve or deny it, right? And then we talked, we went in, and I think at that time, we were sort of rushed a little bit about the language. It was suggested by, um, someone who's coming into town to do a project, who said, you know, why don't we do this language, and we're like, okay, and then we finally figured a language that everyone agreed upon, and then that was the language. I agree that, um, for the general public, it was probably, they, they don't really understand the whole minutia of it all and everything that went involved, so it would be hard for them to bring something to town meeting to amend it, and so they weren't able to sit there and read it, um, as they are the other, um, bylaws and the changes that we bring forward. But I, my only concern would be as a board is, if we remove it, and then they start going to the ZBA, and the ZBA grants them, do we just take away a tool that we could use to almost really heavily regulate it? And, and are we, and do we need to mortar beef up the, the regulation in here, or the verbiage in here, to make it a little tighter and complimentary to what everyone wants to happen? Does that make sense to you?
That's a great point. So, let, let me just get some clarification on that. So, if we did away with the waiver, could an applicant just go straight to the ZBA then?
If, if they wanted something that was less than what the zoning allows for less frontage or less lot width, yes.
But the criteria for a variance isn't just cause you want more frontage, you have to meet specific criteria that's-
Right.
If the, yeah.
Right, but the, but the process is, is they would, they could apply for a variance.
So- And variances are actually granted quite a bit in this town, you know what I mean? So, um, and we've already gone through this, so the variance could be granted. I'm just saying, if we give this up, do we all of a sudden see variances granted, and then we come back a couple years and go, wow, maybe we shouldn't have given up the waiver? That's something for thought. The other thing is, if it's a matter of looking at the language and just beefing it up a little bit to make us feel a little bit more comfortable, and the residents feel comfortable, we have until April 3rd to do that. I mean, technically, we've gotta get-
No, April 3rd is not, April 3rd is when you held one of your public hearings last year.
Yeah, we held a public hearing.
That's, there's nothing magic about April 3rd, but I'll talk about that in a second.
But if we wanted to change the language after tonight, we, we could, if we wanted to make an amend.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be reflected in the warrant.
Exactly, okay, and we talked about how that wasn't very good for having that happen last year.
Right, it would be what you did last year.
Okay, so that's my thoughts for the board to think about.
So, I've been ruminating about this for two months, because last month and the month before, three members of this board made it very, very clear that they would never vote in favor of a waiver, period, irrespective of the application before it. And the reason why this is distressing me is because when we each took an oath of office when we were elected, that said we would uphold the laws, the bylaws, as well as the laws of the Commonwealth. And the laws of the Commonwealth mandate due process to anybody who comes before us. And when you sit there and say, I am never gonna allow this, period, you've already violated the due process rights of everyone who has yet to file that application. And you've sent, uh, uh, hold it, and you've sent a very strong message to anybody who wants to make an application in this town. And that's fine, you can send that message, but as a member of this planning board, I've, I'm just really disappointed that such a strong position was taken, and I don't know if it's a knee-jerk reaction to the particular application that was before us, but I think that putting forth this amendment and now saying, well, our town people were, just read something, and they don't know how to do an amendment from town floor, I get that, and I know it was late in the game when this came onto the warrant article last year, I understand that as well, and maybe it is worth considering. But you have basically foreclosed any opportunity to explore whether this waiver is even a good idea or not. And I, I will not vote in favor of this. This, this could be a four to one, this might be a three to two. There is no way I'm gonna vote in favor of this because of the original reasons stated by the three of you, as to why you wanted this warrant article put together. I think you're trying to add legitimacy to something that you had no good foundation to bring forward to begin with, and that, and feel very strongly about that. Everybody who comes before this board deserves a fair chance, and each of you have indicated you not, you're not willing to give that to them, and that's not fair, and that's not in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth. And that's just my take on it, cause we all took an oath. So, the board can make a motion on it, you guys can vote on it, but, you know, this is not-
I just have to say, I watched the tape that night, and I don't think everybody said that.
No, three of you did.
And I think you put everybody on the, on the hot seat, cause you were very angry, and you were-
Because you, you said, there's no way I'm voting in favor of a waiver, we should just get rid of this, because I will never do this. That's what was said by you guys. You, you said, I will never do this, we should just get rid of it. Why do we have it? So, you know, that's, that's, that's how I feel about it, and I think Michelle's right, you get rid of the waiver, you've now given the power to the ZBA, and you're not gonna achieve your goal. This, this keeps the power with us.
The, and another confusing part of this, and I would love to, if we have the resources to do this, is, um, the consultant that we hired to walk us through the whole duplex thing, Judy Barrett, was not in favor of the waiver. And I would, if we don't go to Judy, we go to somebody else, like, how do you go outside and navigate this? And, you know, if a consultant you hired said, do you know what I mean? So I don't think that helped.
Okay.
It helped that she said that she opposed it.
No.
So this, so this was not, this was not a setup, you just asked that question, Michelle, because, um, I did talk to Judy. Judy Barrett was the, um, is a consultant that we're presently using in this town, we've used her in the past, and Judy worked with this board for probably like a year and a half on that duplex, on the original duplex bylaw. Um, but let me just get back to Judy in a second, because I just wanna point out, especially since this is being broadcast, that I don't want anyone that's viewing this meeting to come away with that something was done wrong by this planning board and was done wrong at town meeting. That is, that couldn't be farther from the case. This planning board held a public hearing by, you know, in accordance with mass general law, that, and you're gonna do it again on these proposed regulations, and, and there may be changes that come out. A resident may come out, a developer, whoever it is, you yourself, you may change the language that is being proposed, that I have to put in the newspaper, that's gonna get printed in the warrant. Um, so, so you may ultimately, because that's what the process is all about, that's the public process, for you or someone to come to a public hearing and make a suggestion that they wanna change something, and then you take that under advisement, as you did last year. So, right or wrong, whether people agree with it or not, this board followed everything to the letter, you know, to, to the T. Everything was done properly. The, the, the hearing was advertised, you took in public comment, you considered when someone wanted to make a, a change, you took that language, you know, into consideration, and then you voted to change the, um, article as the way that it was written. We then get to town meeting, the process at town meeting is because the warrant's already been published, then those articles get, the amendment to one of those articles gets read into the motion. So, that, and it gets approved by town council ahead of time, it gets approved by the town moderator, that's what was done. Um, you know, there were other articles that had changes too, so then, then that gets read, and then that's what's voted on at town meeting. So it doesn't matter what time of night it's voted on, that's town meeting, that's the process. So, I just wanna put it out there that you as a board did not do anything incorrectly, and town meeting didn't do anything correctly. So that said, the, um, I knew that, I mean, you, you, people have asked the question before about what Judy Barrett had made a comment at the design review meeting. So, again, the conversation was out of context, we were talking about design guidelines, and when I asked Judy, you know, to clarify, um, excuse me, what her position was, she says, you know, absolutely, I said that, that, you know, that, that waiver was not something that, you know, that she had proposed, that she would have considered. That said, she did say to me that if the board in fact put forth a waiver, whether it was on duplexes or anything else, if you put forth a bylaw- whether it was on duplexes or anything else, if you put forth a bylaw at last year's town meeting and, and you want to go back the following year, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days later, she said, that's just crazy, she says, just outright crazy. She says, you need to let a bylaw sit there and, and see if people use it or not. And then, you know, in a couple of years, you can then go back and revisit it. That's, that's the process that she advises, and that's certainly the process that, that I've advised you all on. But Judy, you know, to, today, I spoke to her again today, you know, specifically said that you can tell them that I said, you know, you should not be going to town meeting with the, with the change. You should let it, you know, sit for a couple of years, see if anyone, you know, comes into the board, see if it makes sense, see if the board wants to use the waiver provision or not. And because otherwise, they could go to the zoning board of appeals if you did, in this particular case, if you did take, you know, remove this waiver, this so-so.
So if they do, if they were to take an application to the ZBA for a variance, the ZBA would actually decide the duplex issue as well, right?
No, no, because the special permit is still.
Still here.
Yeah, it's still before the planning board.
So we go there first and then here?
Yes, that, that's what we advise people, if someone is seeking a variance, and then, well, so, I mean, sometimes if they also need a special permit, it's before the ZBA, they'll do it in one application. But if someone needs a, a variance or is requesting a variance and then, you know, still needs to go to the planning board, we'll say, go to your variance, don't spend all your money on site plans and, you know, the like, you know, doing, you know, traffic analysis, that whole bit. Go and see if your variance is granted or not, if it's not, at the end of, you know, your application process. And then if it is granted, you know, then go on with the rest of the process.
And so if the variance is granted for the setback requirement, we as a board have to ignore that requirement in the bylaw because the ZB has already spoken on it?
Right, right, it's been, it's been granted, you can't reverse the, what the ZBA, you know, if a, if a variance was granted, you can't ignore that or reverse that.
Okay.
Just so, so I can, I have a comment and a question, just to confirm what you're saying then. So even if, for some reason they got a variance, even though you're not supposed to grant a variance based on the criteria just because you need extra frontage, but say they did, it ultimately comes back here for a special permit in general, so.
Right, for the use as.
It still lies with the planning board at the end of the day.
Yes, yep, for the use of, as a, as a two-family.
Okay, and then my comment is a response to the accusation that I violated or any of us violated some sort of oath. I also went back and looked through the tapes and you can put words in, our mouths or whatever the case, but I don't think any of us said it directly like that, that's your own perception, that's fine. But I, I encourage anyone to go back and review it and I'm sure you'll see the truth, so.
Our townspeople are very smart, they'll go back and look at the tapes and they'll understand exactly what you were saying.
I hope they do.
I would not have been that upset about it and put you on the hot seat.
I hope they also look back at the hearing to see how you chaired it, I hope they look back at the hearing and see how it's handled.
I knew too.
I have a question, Kathy. If, if you, if any of these bylaw changes that we made, just out of curiosity moving forward, and we have these public meetings and people make suggestions and we change it, is it possible moving forward at town meeting that these changes can be printed out and put with the bylaws? Or do they have to be accepted first before you can actually, do you know what I mean, so that someone could read it? Like, this could have been presented on paper, but, you know, the moderator still has to present it at town meeting.
I, I mean, I can, I can check, I've, I've never seen that done.
I mean, just curious, if you have several different changes to, different amendments that, you know, you, you close your warrant and then let's say different, other ones, maybe open space did something, I don't know, someone does something, right? Could you then just take that change and put that out, I mean, you know, to.
Yeah, as a handout or something?
Exactly.
Yeah, I can.
You know, just by the way, you'll notice this handout is from whatever entity it's from.
The town moderator.
Yeah, you know, that's just, so.
Somebody want to make a motion on this article?
Yeah, and secondly, just with Judy Barrett, thank you for clarification on it because I was at that meeting when she said that, which was confusing to me as well, so, thank you on that. My, that's my only concern to the board is I wouldn't want to take a tool right now that we have and then have an applicant go to ZBA and get it approved.
I like your subjection of wording because I'm concerned about that. Like, where it says a determination would not be detrimental to the neighborhood, even when it was talked about last year, like, I remember a couple of people on the board were like, well, how, you know, if you're talking about housing, how do you say certain things? I see how we can, but it, it just, I can see like a waiver if, say, a minimum lot width, this is one fifty and the person has one forty-eight, and they're really close. But just to go back to a hundred, which is where we started, it's hard. So I guess I don't know how I changed the wording, but when we were, it was brought about in front of us when the developers were here, they were like, well, it's for a lot that cannot be developed any other way. Say that there's a hard lot that no one wants to develop, but we have a hundred and forty-eight feet of frontage and we can put a duplex there, then that would be okay. But not just dropping them down to a hundred feet because we want to do more, you know? And I'm not trying to put it on any applicant, any one general applicant, I'm just saying in general. You know, I'd rather do ten than twenty, or twenty than ten and I want to drop it, but.
So I just want to go on record, after you explained that to me, Bob, because I'm just concerned with if we gave up the waiver, that, and that's a tool that we have and was recommended to us. And there may be situations where, we're not talking about the last applicant, but where we would deny it because of the waiver, it didn't meet the criteria that we would set forth, so.
But the applicant proposed this waiver, this wasn't recommended to us, this was proposed by the applicant who then came to the board and applied with this waiver. So it wasn't like, it was recommended as part of this package, it was added, I was at the hearing that it was added and it was added by the very applicant that came here and then used it.
Saying if another applicant came forward, right, and, and it didn't meet, and somehow when we reviewed with it, we, it was clear with this wording that it was detrimental to the neighborhood, right? We would then say, you know, clearly we're seeing this is detrimental to the neighborhood and therefore we're not granting the waiver. I would hope that then that person wouldn't go get a variance.
But, so, let me ask, in part of your process, why did the board bother to do one fifty? If it, like, what was, why bother doing one fifty if it could just be any, if you could change it along the way? What, was there a reason for one fifty, a good reason or just a?
Well, I think when we just started with one fifty, it was in preservation of those areas. Because when you look at the RC and the GR areas, that there were a lot of hundred-foot frontage lots. And we felt a hundred and fifty, there was a, we did these calculations, we went through it, it was extensive, it was like two or three meetings about, when we did RC and GR, why R one fifty made a difference. The only thing I can say is, and I understand, and Judy has said this several times, duplexes, regardless if you're in a Northborough, Acton, Ashland, Framingham or Natick, are a very emotional thing, they always come up, people don't like them, some people do like them, but towns are struggling with it. So that's, she's always said that right out of the gate, and, and I appreciate that she was honest with that. I will say, if you look at this from a different thing, there are lots in town that just don't conform. I, I see it on Main Street where we want to push the buildings forward and you can't push them forward, you just can't push them forward, they've got to be sideways or they've got to be further back, there's got to be a reason. And so you're not always going to have that perfect lot. That's why I think, that's why, I mean, I, I get the lot that this person, this applicant was talking about, I know this is the wording they brought forward to us, but I think opportunity, having a waiver where, you know, it's a hundred and, like Amy said, it's a hundred and forty feet, it's a perfect situation to grant the waiver for, and we don't allow it. You know what I mean? I just, I don't know. I've just seen it over the years, but that's why I said I'm on the fence about it.
And also too, this is, this has nothing to do with duplexes, but elsewhere in the bylaw, just so you don't think this is like the only place where the planning board can grant waivers, throughout the bylaw, there's waiver provisions for the, for the planning board. So, this is, you know, this is not something that was like brand new in the zoning. So you, there are other sections, particularly with landscaping and buffers and amount of parking, that you have, as a board, you have the ability to, to do the waivers, to, to grant waivers.
I mean, just to give you a little sense, when we did the master zoning, there, and, and this was talked about for a year, like, over a year, there was sort of mindset that the special permit should go with, if I correct, like, the, if you're having a variance, then all those permits should go with those variances, right? And so, a lot of things shifted from the planning board to the ZBA. And so, and then the ZBA wasn't really part of that special permitting authority anymore. It was more under, because we wanted that one-stop shopping, make it easier. So if you're going with a variance, go with the special permit, go with the same board that you're going with. And that was part of the process when we did the rezoning.
Yeah, and part of, yeah, part of the site plan too.
You know, and, and so then the planning board, which you would normally think would be part of that special permitting process, then lost a lot of this stuff. And I think bringing it back, if you have opportunities where you can have now variances, instead of variances, waivers, it's a good thing because it brings it all the way back to the planning board again. Do you know what I'm saying?
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, so on, like historically, that's what happened with, when we did the major zoning, right? A lot of stuff shifted, am I correct, Kathy?
Yeah.
From the planning board as a special permitting granting authority to the ZBA. One-stop shopping when a developer comes in, instead of going to two boards. Now, and this is the first situation where it comes back to us completely and we have that authority with the, with the waiver. Maybe the language of the waiver was handed to us at the last minute through communication where we, we talked about it and we agreed to, we all agreed to it, right? But maybe we need to, next year or whatever, we have more time, look at the language of the waiver. But that's where, I, I don't want to start going back to where the special permitting leaves the planning board again and everything goes back to the, the ZBA, you know? Special permits for two houses, two families go to the ZBA now because that's, you know, they grant a variance or something.
It'll be a bifurcated process.
Yeah.
They'll have to, they'll have to go to two places.
Yeah, now they will.
Yeah.
But when we did the major zoning, we agreed to shift everything over so they didn't have to go to two places.
Right, right.
So there's just, it gets complicated because then you start to look at, are we giving up a tool that might help us, you know, negotiate or work on other things? And are we giving up where all of a sudden, things used to be under the planning board and now get shifted over to, long-term, down the line, when you do it over again, to the ZBA? It's where I struggle with. I do agree with the hundred and fifty feet, we looked at this a lot, and we were doing that to preserve all of the lots in RC and GR.
I agree with the one hundred and fifty feet too, and now as we go back to that, it's like, we spent all that time getting to that number. And with this waiver, we're bringing it back to a hundred, so now I'm back at that because we did put a lot of time and effort into it. Why wouldn't someone come in every single application and ask for the hundred feet because they're offered it? It just, it's going to make it very touchy every single time. And I'm not saying if I would approve it or disapprove it, but it was very touchy before and after.
What do you think, Anthony, because of the?
Well, I, if I understand correctly, I didn't appreciate the fact that somebody could then, we're actually taking away some of our ability to manage this as a planning board. And, and if it could just then go to the ZBA. So I, I think this, this kind of two-step process is probably better for, for all of us in being able to control, you know, the development of duplexes going forward.
I would just recommend to the board that if we, whatever way, that, whether the, and if the board feels comfortable and Teresa and everyone else, that if we decide to keep the waiver in, if we feel uncomfortable or don't feel confident with the language, that we look at the language again. And maybe even consult with Judy about how to make the language work better to protect the neighborhoods. Because really, that's what it was all about, right? The whole thing about one fifty was protecting the neighborhoods about, you know, and the RC and the.
Yeah, I mean, it, it had more to do with the, the scale, that's kind of where the whole conversation started, was that some of the people felt that some of the duplexes that had been built were, looked too big and in a residential, in this primarily single-family neighborhood and sort of overwhelmed, you know, the existing houses. So, the, the, where you arrived at, which was true, it was a very arduous process, but where you arrived at the one fifty was to provide more room on the lot so that the, you know, that again, the, the scale could be maintained in, in the, you know, in an existing neighborhood. So you've got, you know, you've got more depth and more lot width, more frontage, and that the building wouldn't, you know, basically, you know, go from a lot to a lot.
And if we look at, for example, Pine Haven, right? I forget the street that's right down there, it's right across from Ace Hardware, where they did the really big duplexes, they took the ranches down, put the duplexes. If another one came along beside that, I think we could clearly say, you're not great, that's, that's too detrimental to that neighborhood. Now, someone might say, well, you did it to the left, why can't you do it to the right, you know? But that would be a classic case. The other thing is, the duplexes all along one thirty-five, if they started swinging in towards North Gate and down School, I don't know if it's School Street or whatever streets that, that goes down, that again, now, that was our concern. When you take them off of the main thoroughways and start creeping into the neighborhoods, that's when it becomes detrimental. That's where I think this waiver really kicks in. You know, I know the, the applicant was on Main Street and just creeping down Lincoln, but was just on the edge of Lincoln. But I think that's where this whole thing came out, the concern about the hundred and fifty feet versus a hundred is, when you start getting into Pine Haven, you start to get into North Gate, you start to get into the School Street, you have all hundred-foot frontage lots there.
Yeah. Which is why I don't know if I want the waiver, because all those people came to us, all the people in like Summer Street and they're like, they fought for that hundred and fifty feet. So now with this waiver, it might push it back to a hundred because maybe there is one duplex on Summer Street and someone comes to us and says, well, now it's still in consistency because there is one over there. And I felt like the hundred and fifty feet was minimum and it wasn't upping it by a lot. So now to drop it back to a hundred, I think, I'm just, I think the waiver should go.
And you can get a variance on any of these, you get a variance for eighty for other districts or, I mean, so, a variance is always going to be in the cards. And, and in fact, you can even get a special permit for a duplex in other zones, just through ZBA anyway. So this process is across both boards no matter what.
No, I, no, it would have to be a variance.
Oh, there's not a special permit for duplexes that goes to?
Just for planning board. The, that's, that was part of the change last year, was that it's the planning board. If you, let's see.
Oh, okay, I thought I saw a couple of duplexes go through ZBA a couple of months ago, on, on Business East.
That, that were, that was before the ZBA?
Yeah, wasn't it? I thought it was, maybe I missed, maybe I misunderstood. Was that it? Maybe, I'm not sure.
Is that from a one-family to a two-family?
Oh, yeah, 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 maybe that's different.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 that's the, the three forty-three, that, that actually, that hasn't, they'll be before you, three forty-three.
Oh, okay, so I misunderstood, thank you.
And that's the conversion of a, it used to be a two-family, then it went to a one-family, now it wants to go to a two-family. So that's still actually before design review. But, but in, you know, in the use table, it's a special permit from the planning board and then, and then, you know, it's not allowed in the business districts. And this is under part A, so if you look on page thirty-nine, where it says two-family, so it says no in RA and no in RB, so if someone wanted to put a duplex in either one of those residential districts, they'd have to apply for a variance.
Gotcha.
And then everywhere else, residential C, GR, Main Street Residential and Downtown Neighborhood is a special permit from this board.
Okay, so and a variance is obviously ZBA, so either way, it's a dual process. It's not like we're avoiding variances altogether by having a waiver, it's there no matter what. I don't know, I still maintain it creates a disconnect. I, I hear the points, I, I feel like it was a hundred and fifty for a reason, and that's what I said before, that there were valid reasons for coming up with one fifty. A waiver came in in the eleventh hour that was proposed by an applicant and for whatever reason, language aside is here. So my, I'm questioning that if it's, if it's causing strife, if it's causing extra cycles for people, is it worth having? I don't, that's what I'm wondering.
It's hard to say it's causing strife if there's only been one application.
So maybe I should make a motion and see where it lands.
So, let's make a motion. And then, can I, can I just point out one thing? The, the, the only place where this waiver is allowed, or to be considered, is in the residential C district.
Right.
It's not in all, it's not in all the residential districts where you could grant a special permit for a duplex. So I don't know if that makes a difference to anyone or not, but this waiver is only in one residential district.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So in the other ones, you could just get a variance. So whether a variance is in R, A, B, C, but there's, there's still the variance component in this. If you didn't have a waiver.
So what she's saying is, in downtown neighborhood, if you don't have a hundred feet, you only have eighty, you get a variance.
GR.
It, you have to, yeah, you have to apply for it.
Right. You know.
So it's the same.
But RC is huge, like, it's a huge district. And when we went through it, we saw there were plenty of lots that had a hundred and fifty feet.
Let's digress a little. So, I, I always thought, at least in the real estate world that I work with, in the land sales and everything, the rule of thumb was, you need to have the frontage, right? If you don't have the frontage, most likely, you're not going to be granted whatever you need to be granted from the ZBA or whatever. The ZBA has a tendency to work with setbacks versus frontage. In my world, that's usually looking for, you're like, does it have a hundred feet of frontage? Does it have a hundred and fifty? It's like we look at the frontage. If you have frontage, you're golden. If you have a lot of it, everybody wants to buy it from you. Your neighbors want to buy it, you know? So lots of times, people will have like nine hundred feet of frontage, and they're like, can I buy your frontage? So in the real estate world of land sales, that's how it works. Have you ever seen any, like, variances go forward where they don't have enough frontage, like, less than the minimum? I mean, does the ZBA actually approve, like, I have eighty, but I don't have a hundred feet?
In, in all the years I've worked here, someone asked me today how long I've worked here, at this retirement party, I don't know if that was a hint. The, I've never seen the zoning board of appeals grant a variance for frontage. Just as a side note, this has nothing to do with the duplex, although people are asking about a duplex. There's a, there's a lot in town right now that's, it's been for sale for a long time, and it's on one thirty-five. And it has the minimum frontage, but it's a very oversized lot. And I don't know about Bob's office, but I want to say at least twice a week, we have people coming in who.
I know that property.
Who, who think they just discovered this property, and they, and they want to know the process to apply for a variance for the frontage. And, and we tell them, you can, but don't even bother. It's, it's not going to happen. They've never granted one. So that's just, that's just more information.
That's someone that should go in, tear down the house, and put up a single family.
Right, but everyone, because it's oversized, everyone thinks they should have three houses there or three duplexes. That's, you know, there's various things that have been proposed, you know, over the counter. But, you know, just as an example, I mean, we, we, we tell people routinely, you know, if, you know, it's up to you whether you want to apply for something, and this is the process. We'll help you through the process. But in that particular case, I mean, I know personally, you know, my office is telling people, it's not going to happen.
So you're saying you can't, and this is what I thought anyway. Kathy, you're saying that historically, the ZBA does not grant variances for frontage?
Yes, yeah, I, I can't, I don't even, I can't even think of someone that's gone. Now, again, I've been here a lot of years, but I mean, and we can, well, it would be hard to research. We can only go back so many years when we kept the lot, lot records, but it's not.
So we're planning for an unlikely scenario then, to say, well, then it's going to go as a variance. That's an unlikely scenario.
Well, no, in the, this, this is, I mean, if someone wants to put a duplex in, I mean, they're going to, they're going to try to put a duplex in. I mean, if that's, if that's their business model, or if that's, but, you know, they think, you know, should happen on that lot based on, I don't know, you know, what else is in the neighborhood or whatever, they're going to do whatever they can to put, to put that in. What I'm saying is, someone will, and I think this is where Michelle was going too. We have, like, a lot of people, they'll find an undersized lot in town, and, and it's basically been deemed unbuildable or undevelopable, and that's how we have it labeled through the assessor's office too, because it doesn't have enough frontage. They, we, we tell people, you know, don't, you, you can certainly go through the process if you want, but, you know, just because you don't have enough frontage, so it's not, they don't have enough frontage to make a legal lot. So you're starting here with a duplex with a premise that they at least have legal frontage for a lot. You know, that it's, if they, if they're in the residential C district, then they've got a hundred feet, you know? And so what they would be coming to you for a waiver for is, you know, I don't have the hundred and fifty feet, you know, I've got a hundred, I've got a legal lot, but I don't have the extra frontage. And so that's what they would be going to the zoning board of appeals for, to say, look, if the lot meets the zoning. You know, I just have, I want to put a duplex on it instead of a single family.
And a legal lot is a hundred feet of frontage.
So where they haven't granted, you know, no one's, no one's asked, but, you know, if someone, basically, if it's pure economic value, you know, being by someone, so say you, you know, and there, there's a lot that comes up, there's a lot in Northgate, there's a lot on Valentine Road. I mean, I can, I can, I can pick all the lots in town where, you know, someone thinks they're discovering them for the first time. And it's their undersized, either undersized or under frontage. And so they look at them and go, oh, you know, I, I can't believe no one's ever built a, a house here before. I'm going to apply for a, a variance because it doesn't have enough frontage. And, you know, we, again, tell them, sure, you can go through the process, but I'm just going to tell you, you know, no, no one's ever done that, and, and they're not.
It's not in the criteria. Extra frontage is not in the criteria.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, you know, and we always, as staff, we always tell people, you know, we're not voting members, so.
Right.
You know, you could.
But the legal criteria for a variance does not include because you need extra frontage, or because you can make more money if you put seven instead of six, or whatever the case. Okay.
I always say to my clients when they want, someone approaches them for extra frontage, they can pay. It's like gold.
It is gold.
It's gold.
I know. Amy, do you have a motion?
Oh, God.
Huh?
We'll try again. Do you have a motion?
Sure, and it is a tough one, but we've been put in a lot of tough situations. I make a motion to see if the town will vote to amend part seven of the Northborough Town Code, the Northborough zoning bylaw, seven oh six oh two oh J, Table of Density and Dimensional Regulations by removing the footnotes and deleting the text shown in strike three. So actually, we'd have to put a little line, right, on the ones that are near the one fifty at RC, and delete, "The planning board may approve a waiver to reduce the minimum lot frontage and minimum lot width to one hundred feet by special permit upon a determination that it would not be detrimental to the neighborhood, would be appropriate with respect to the surrounding properties and activities, and would not disturb any consistency with the neighborhood."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Do we have a vote? What was the vote?
Yeah, there was two in favor, three opposed.
Okay.
Okay, so then what I'll do is, I'll make the change on the design review bylaw, and then submit, yeah, that was the only one. And then submit though to the agenda administrator tomorrow.
Perfect.
And then, let's just talk for a second about your meeting schedule for you, also the ZBA application.
Right? Oh, no, is this for us? What's this, Thirty Fourth Road?
Yeah.
This is ours.
Let me just do the, as far as when, when you want to meet next, because I can't, I don't have enough time to advertise and, and, you know, do all the, it's basically getting into the paper. For February nineteenth, so the public hearing would start on March fifth, which is the first Monday in March. Yep, so it works with everyone?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then, whether or not you, there isn't anything on the agenda, there won't be anything on the agenda for February nineteenth as far as anything that's, that will get filed, because again, there's not enough time to, you know, to do any advertising.
It's also February vacation week.
Oh, okay. So, describe that meeting.
So the next one is March fifth, right?
March five.
And then the, the zoning. Okay, and then, yeah, so the zoning article that, sorry, the ZBA petition that you have in front of you is before the zoning board of appeals, and it, the only reason why it's going to the zoning board of appeals is because it's in a groundwater district. So nothing is changing to the outside of this building. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what the chemicals are, but they're, it's Aspen aerogels on Forbes Road. And so they're doing some sort of change, you know, internally, and so it has to go to groundwater, which I believe is scheduled. Is it still tentative, Teresa? I think it's next Tuesday, at least tentatively.
I think it's still tentative, yeah.
Because Mayor Deanie hasn't submitted their additional information yet.
Yeah.
That's the three twenty-nine West Main Street, so that may or may not be happening at the February twenty-sixth ZBA meeting. Yeah, I think they have until Monday or Tuesday to submit their information to the groundwater advisory committee. So that's the only thing that, that you have in, in front of you.
Will groundwater still meet to review this application?
The, yes, but it just hasn't been verified yet, Harry. So I'll let you all know, we talked about that at the last meeting too. I'll let you all know when that's scheduled, but.
So this has a site, a site plan approval on it? Right? Special permit with site plan approval under seven oh three oh five oh?
They, no, they shouldn't have ticked that off, because there's no, there's nothing, there's no change to the outside of the building, there's no addition to the building, there's no additional parking. It all, if I'm remembering correctly, it all has to do with what they're storing inside.
It's all interior. They're changing their bulk storage for one of their raw materials. There's no change to the exterior footprint, no change in occupancy. There's no change in parking design, layout.
Okay, so this doesn't have to come to us?
No, no. So that, if it was ticked off, it shouldn't have been ticked off.
Well, they wrote it in.
Because it's strictly a groundwater special permit that there's.
No, but it's written down, like, it's fully written out, not just ticked off. It's actually on the zoning interpretation.
Can I see that?
Yes.
It's, it's, it's not.
Well, it's only because it's, if it's in that particular section, seven oh three oh five oh eight two, ZBA, site plan, okay?
But there's no actual site plan.
Right, but I don't, I don't think there is, I mean, I, so, we might have been overzealous in our.
Yeah.
But it's not, because there, you know, if you go through the criteria as far as a site plan, you know, what's a site plan. It's, you know, new construction, there is no new construction. Non-residential additions, it's not an addition, construction of a new parking lot, not a new parking lot, and land clearing.
All right, so we don't have to worry about scheduling them.
Okay, that's all I have, and then we'll have the, for your next meeting. As soon as Elaine has the minutes done for your January meeting, we'll post those in the graph, and, you know, they'll go out to you.
Okay, we can take those up at the March meeting. It's fine.
Can I just, where's Forbes Road?
Off Whitney.
Up off of Whitney? It used to be all digital, way back, way back in the day, there's all of Forbes.
Oh, all the way down there, yeah.
It's a dead end. It's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, okay.
All right. I'll sit on the agenda, so we are adjourned.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Bye.